Yes, this Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to adjournment. May God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
If you would, I would like to ask Commissioner Baker Ring to give the invocation this evening, and if you would remain standing for the pledge to the flag, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
A by your head, please. Thank you, O gracious heavenly Father, for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Sumner County. We ask for healing hands on Commissioner Terry Moss and on Cindy Williams and those of us others that may be unknown, may be known to some of us. We ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no beginning, justice, or law.
Men and clerk call it over.
Each Commissioner record your presence.
All right, we have 23 members present, and the majority vote and supermajority vote remains the same number, of course. Do I have an approval of the regular agenda? All in favor, say aye. Oh, pardon me, Mr. Commissioner Mansfield, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to defer Item E, Committee on Committees, Commission Committee Slate until September. This wasn't published, published and a notice for the public to see out there. And, you know, it seems, I know last week, there were several members of that committee that weren't even asked whether there was a quorum, and the chairman shows up to the committee meetings later that night. And I, this kind of stuff that I feel is not very transparent, to be honest with you. That's one thing that I did when I first became chairman of Committee on Committees in 2022, is to move Committee on Committee Meetings up a week in advance, so that everybody had plenty of public notice for published agenda items, as far as like names that are going forward for any type of committee. And that was, I believe, a bad practice of the previous commission to do it an hour before the commission meeting. So I'm not in favor of doing that. I moved to defer that until September's commission meeting, now that they finally met tonight.
All right, there's a motion and a second, and we will, I think, defer. There is no debate. All right, Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a question, and I'm genuinely curious. Is there, are there any pitfalls of delaying this? What would the procedure be? Would we be without committees, or would we, would the previous committees?
For a period of time, we would be without committees.
Okay.
Commissioner Mansfield.
I'll go ahead and, I guess, restate my motion to that, with the deferral, that the previous, concurrent committee systems will meet through September from this past year's slate for continuity as we vote on a deferral.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, so you understand the vote, and I'll ask the clerk to put it on the board. If you're in favor of Mr. Mansfield's motion, it'd be a yes. Opposed, a no vote.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
And that fails 14 to nine, so that will remain as it is on the agenda. All right, seeing no one else in the queue, all in favor of setting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
No.
Well, let's just put that on the board, so we won't have any question about it.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, the agenda is now set with 14 positive votes. All right, consent agenda, do I have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Approval of the minutes for July 28th?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We have certificates of recognition now, and that we have only one where someone is from the outside is actually awarding our people something. And we have the mayor and the sheriff who will come forward and meet with the sons of the American Revolution, if these folks will come forward. Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you for allowing us to do this, by the way. On Monday, May 19th of 2025, deputies from the Sumner County Sheriff's Office responded to a residence on Breeder Road in Portland after a report of sexual assault against three juveniles. Detective Eric Pullen, Deputy Darren Jenkins, Deputy Angela Norvell, and Deputy Chris Cersey and Deputy Jody McDowell arrived first and were actively involved in all stages of this call. The 30-year-old subject locked himself and his one-year-old son in a bedroom and indicated to the child's mother that they would never see him or the child again. These deputies entered the room where the subject was found armed with a knife. He was ordered to drop the weapon, which he refused, and the deputies tried to disarm him. A deputy was able to remove the child safely during the altercation with him. The subject injured himself with the knife during the altercation and was removed from the house and transported to a local trauma center. These deputies showed great professionalism and courage while safely getting the child to safety. For this courageous act, each of these deputies will be awarded the Sons of American Revolution Law Enforcement Accommodation Award. Please come forward as I call, as your name is called out, and receive your award. First, we have Eric Pullen. Next, Deputy Darren Jenkins. Next, Deputy Angela Norvell. Next, Deputy Chris Cersey. And last, Deputy Jody McDowell.
We appreciate the Sons of the American Revolution, and our mayor is a member. And I have just joined, but we appreciate the work they do in the community. We now will have recognition of the public, and I want to, if, Steve, if you can hand me the paper. I want to remind everyone, if you will, that this is not a time to personally attack anyone. We will not allow that, and we don't call people by name. You may refer to a commissioner, so forth, but not name a commissioner. We will ask you to be seated if that's the case. This could be a very tense night tonight, and I would just ask you to be respectful in your comments. Michael Zinsler.
Good evening to the commission, and thank you for allowing us to speak. I, I was here, I guess, on the 28th of July, and spoke my full five minutes in favor of term limits, so I'm not going to repeat those same remarks tonight, although I did email them again to all the commissioners prior to the start of today's meeting. But I do have some additional remarks that I want to make. Commissioner Mansfield made me aware of a memo that was provided to Chairman Hyde, which stated that term limits are only permitted with a charter form of county government. The opinion relies on a Tennessee Supreme Court case, Bailey versus County of Shelby. In my opinion, that email was just wrong. I'm a 1975 graduate of the Vanderbilt University School of Law. I'm a 48-year resident of Sumner County. I reside at 914 Farrington Way, Gallatin. Now, I've reviewed the case of Bailey versus County of Shelby. Briefly, Shelby County adopted a charter form of government. The Shelby County Commission voted to approve term limits of two four-year terms, and the voters approved it in a referendum by an 80% margin. Three commissioners who were term limited filed a lawsuit trying to invalidate term limits so they could remain in office. First, the plaintiffs argued that term limits were not, quote, "a qualification for holding office," end quote. The Supreme Court flatly rejected that argument. The plaintiffs then argued that Article 7 of the Constitution establishing terms of four years means terms of four years with no limit. The Supreme Court rejected that argument. Further, the phrase, quote, "term of four years" merely refers to the duration of each term. Significantly, the court said, and it's a quote from the decision, "There is nothing in the language of the Constitution to prevent a county from placing a limit on the number of terms that may be served," that's the end of the quote. The plaintiffs finally argued that if the statute allowing a charter form of county government allows the charter government to establish qualifications for office, it violates the Constitution. The court rejected the argument that only the General Assembly could establish term limits as a qualification for office for elected county officials in a charter form of county government. Significantly, the court noted that Article 1, Section 1 of Tennessee's Constitution provides that the people have, and this is another quote, "an unalienable, indefeasable right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner they may think proper," end of quote. The bottom line is that the court did not decide that some of the county commissioners could not decide to approve term limits. Rather, the Supreme Court rejected the excuse that because Shelby County had a charter form of government, they should somehow be treated differently than other forms of county government. The court did not decide that only a charter form of government can have term limits for county commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Baker.
Kevin Baker, 424 AB Wade Road. Again, I'd like to offer my support for the idea of term limits. Recently, I sent out an email to the Sumner Taxpayer Alliance email list, and other than one of the county commissioners who replied to me, 100% of my replies were for people saying they 100% support term limits, so add that to the overwhelming weight of evidence supporting term limits. Also, the idea of allowing people to speak on things that aren't on the agenda or were removed from the agenda at the last minute, I think that's a great idea. But more importantly, I wanted to speak about the idea of county employees being in the elected legislative body. You know, Courtney Rogers tried to push a bill through the state, and it was killed in committee, even though, at the time, well, he's now the Speaker of the House, Cameron Sexton was in support of it. It got killed by the committee chairman. And the argument was that in small counties, they won't be able to find people to, to serve as county commissioners. Well, my argument to that is that most cities in their charters have that there are term limits. Well, if cities, and cities are typically smaller than counties, if they can find people and have term limits, surely people in the counties can find people. I also think, as soon as you got rid of the incumbency, a lot more people would be willing to run. They all know, people know that incumbents are hard to beat, so they, they aren't going to stick their neck out and try to run when they know they can't win. But if it was a vacant seat, they would run. We'd get a lot new blood in here, a lot of new ideas, and maybe a lot of younger people, too. So along those lines, thanks a lot, and I hope you'd consider my input.
Thank you. Mike McCleod.
Mike McCleod, 102 Tioga Trail, Hendersonville. Several things. The approval of the storybook trail, I think that's a great thing, as long as the county has some type of input into what kind of stories are going to be put on that. As far as the electricity to the health department, as I understand, somewhere along the line, the, the school, Merle Hyde School, somehow or another tapped into the health department's electric, and that got severed as the, when the building was demolished. So I would assume you would want to keep that separate. The direct, the, the local funding required for the state Route 258 and Old Drake's Creek Road to be split equally between the county and the city, and then, and that's fine, as long as you can hold the city to the fire, their feet to the fire on that. I mean, the library, last year was a fight because of the, they wanted the county to pay for the AC, and the county didn't want to. That was a big fight. There's a fight going on now between Hendersonville, I mean, the county and Gallatin with the parking garage. That will be coming up, that, that actually has to be taken on. As far as term limits, I am a firm believer in term limits. I think it was 1951 when Congress voted to limit term limits to the president for two terms. That was coming on the heels of President Roosevelt's popularity, and they were afraid that he would get in office again and again and again, and he probably would have. At the same time, they refused to offer it to themselves. They just limited him. If, and, and everything Kevin said is correct, you know, the, the argument that there's not enough good people, that, that's just, I just don't see that, that be the case. I think there's always going to be good people that want to run. Excuse me. As far as recognition of the public, I firmly think that is, that should be passed, and they should be allowed to speak, even if it is at the end, when half of us should be half asleep by then, but, but they should, the citizens should be allowed to talk. They should be allowed to voice their opinions, whether you guys like it or not. You know, we are still citizens, we the people, as my shirt says. We have a right to speak. The county employees being county elected officials, you know, I can see, that, that's, that's tough, because I can see where there's always going to be a problem with that. I mean, not that any of you sitting here have any type of integrity problem, but it puts you in that position. And whether you don't want, whether you want to be there or not, it puts you in that position that you have to, sometimes you have to vote on giving yourself a raise, or not. I mean, or your spouse, or your daughter, or son. It, it just, it just seems to me that that would be the appropriate thing to do, is, is do it that way. If you can't see fit to do that, at least next year, when the budgets come up, sever the county and the school budgets. That way, if you have a spouse that works for the school department, you know, you don't have to vote on it. But the way it is now, with both of them combined together, you're not doing your job if you don't vote. You got to vote. But if you sever it, at least you can exclude yourself from one of them, if you find yourself into, in that type of position. Gosh, I've still got a minute left. The, the appropriation for the bridal house, I am a firm believer that, that that should be taken care of. I mean, we, we need to preserve our history. On Sunday, the 24th, they, they, they will have, if these laws could talk, they always have guest speakers come in, so if you've never been to that, go. It's very interesting, and they always serve lemonade and brownies. And one last thing, and I'll have 22 seconds left. The choices that you, we make is determine, will determine the outcome of our tomorrows. Maybe not us so much, but our children and our grandchildren have to live with the, everything that is put together here tonight and ongoing. Thank you.
Mr. John Gentry.
My name is John Gentry, 208 Navajo Court. I'm, I'm addressing the commission again tonight on, on the rule change to allow citizens to address the body on, on non-agenda matters. Have you, have you thought about, the rule actually doesn't, doesn't present, or, or say citizens can't address issues that are on non-agenda matters? The rule doesn't say that. It just says that we may address the commission on matters that are on the agenda. It doesn't rule out that we can't. Why is that? Why do you think the rule's written that way? It's tricky legal language, so that we can't challenge a cost, a, a rule that is oppressive of a constitutional right. We can't attack the rule. So if, if we're going to challenge oppression of the right to address those invested with the powers of government, then we've got to challenge the chairperson or the commission for oppressing that right, and then we've got to get all over the hurdle of all these false qualified immunities that have been created for public officials. So it's, it's trickery that it does this. So I encourage this commission to come back into compliance with the Constitution of this state, that citizens have a right to address those invested with the powers of government by address, Article 1, Section 23 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee. Come back into, into compliance with that. And I want to share a little bit of, of history with you. This book, it's a Treatise on Constitutional Limitations. This is the most cited book on constitutional law, or one of the most cited books. The Supreme Court of the United States has repeatedly cited this book. In 1995, they said the great constitutional scholar, Thomas Cooley. In a 2008 opinion, they said the most famous was the judge and professor, Tom, Thomas Cooley, who wrote a massively popular 1868 Treatise on Constitutional Limitations. This book was written in 1883, and let me tell you what Justice Cooley said. He said, "The right of the people to petition the government for redress agreements is one which would seem unnecessary to be expressly provided for in a Republican government, since it results from, since it results from the very nature and structure of its institutions." Cooley's saying, "I'm surprised we even got to write this down. This is like saying, 'You have a right to breathe air.'" It is ridiculous that we even have to write this down. And he says, "It is impossible that this right could be practically denied until the spirit of liberty had wholly disappeared, and the people have become so servile and so debased as to be, it becomes unfit to exercise the privileges of three men." And he goes on, and he says, "It may right many a wrong, and a deprivation of it would at once be felt by every free man as a degradation. The right of petitioning is a necessary consequence of free speech and deliberation, a simple, primitive, and natural right. And as a privilege, it is not even denied the creature in addressing the deity." So when you say we can't address you because it's not on the, on, on the agenda, you put yourselves above God. That's what, that's what it's doing. And you're sworn oath to support the Constitution of this state, and to violate that oath is the very definition of perjury under Tennessee Code annotated. This right, historically, well, look, let's put this into, into more terms that we can understand in our times today, and why this right is so important. Did you guys hear about Benton County? We had a school teacher down there, also, I think, a former commissioner, who was, who was, he's been, he's been accused of raping children in the school, young boys. And everybody in the town knew about it. They're all, everybody's like, oh, this is strange, you know, Stokes is riding around with these young boys. Everybody knew what was going on, and it didn't come to light. Charges weren't made until a bunch of people got out with street signs and said, "We've got a pedophile abuser teacher in the school." And so then it came to light, then it was investigated, and he didn't, he didn't go to court, so they had to go arrest this commissioner. What should happen is when we have situations like that, we should become, able to come to our, our legislative bodies, or to the school board, and say, you know, "We have this right to address you, and we've got a problem with this person in government." That's what, that's a big part. It's a right to petition for redress agreements. That's a big part, and I'm out of time, and I have a lot more to share on this. But I, I encourage the body to, to come into compliance with the Constitution. And, and, and really quick on term limits, it doesn't matter, black, white, Christian do, Republican, Democrat, doesn't matter if you're man or woman, doesn't matter the education level, from a plumber to a PhD. Everybody in this country wants term limits, and, and certainly for our county commission and here. Power is inherent in the people, Article 1, Section 1, and to deny that power inherent in the people is to say, "Power is inherent in you." It's not true. Thank you.
Cynthia McCleod.
Hi, my name is Cynthia McCleod. I live at 102 Tioga Trail, Hendersonville. I'm going to speak tonight, actually, I'm going to read the codicil for the Brown House. No, just kidding. That's usually what I do up here, but I'm going to speak on term limits. Let me tell you a little story. Back in 1995, my boss's brother decided to run for senator. He was a famous cardiothoracic transplant surgeon. He was a famous cardiothoracic transplant surgeon in Massachusetts and also founded the transplant center at Vanderbilt University. He decided to run for US Senate. However, he pledged, "I'm going to run. If I win, I'm going to be here for two terms. That's it." He won and he, he ended up being Senator Bill Frist. He served us four years. Then he was elected as the Senate Majority Leader from 2003 to 2007. After 2007, Dr. Bill Frist went back to being Dr. Bill Frist and he resigned. Nobody needs to stay forever in the same position in government. That was his philosophy. He was my boss. I remember it to this day and it's, it's just, I'm very, very sincere about it. Now, the second thing I'm going to talk about, sometimes I talk kind of slow, so sorry. Remember county commissioners, who you, who you represent? I see people now looking at their cell phones. I don't know, shall we take their cell phones up like we do teenagers? But, but who do you represent? You represent me. I'm a citizen. I live in Sumner County. And you, every single one of you, and I love you all to death. There are some that are meaner than others and I'm not going to name any names. But I do love you. Sumner County is a great county. I've lived here forever and it can be beautiful. It's growing at a rapid pace, too rapid for me because, like I said, back in 1974, I just graduated from high school and I moved to Sumner County. So make love, not war. Anyway, um, county commissioners, you play a vital role in shaping the quality of life within our county. I have been here numerous times. I've represented it, I've represented Westmoreland. I've represented Portland. I've represented, um, Liberty Creek, the Brown House. There's so many good things, so many good qualities about Sumner County. Just keep them to your heart and let it be, let Sumner County grow. And make good decisions. Make, and don't, don't get up here. I've got a minute left. Don't get up here and bicker because you know who your mommy of when you bicker back and forth? Your mommy are my kids and they're adults and I still fuss at them. Don't bicker because sometimes the bad and the good and the wishy-washy, I've said it before, I'll say it again. Sometimes there's, there's little conversations going on, "Well, I'll vote this way, but okay, if you're going to vote that way, I'll vote this way." Don't, don't do that. We know what you're doing. We know. We know how you act. We see you. Anyway, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Ruth Fennel.
Oh, you already started and I hadn't even said anything yet. Can you keep going? All right, I'm going to go fast. Ruth Fennel, 1049 Blue Jay Way, Gallatin, Tennessee. I'm here to respectfully, again, request that you vote yes and support the following items enacting term limits for commissioners. I would like that capped at two four-year terms. If current commissioners want to exclude themselves from that and serve two in additional, so be it. I also want, uh, I'm asking you to support the public being allowed to speak on non-agenda items. My personal preference is at the beginning because we all have been here at midnight and beyond on various meetings and it just kind of drags it out. Plus, if they speak at the beginning, then you can talk about the issues. If they speak at the end, then you can't talk about whatever is concerning them. So I'm asking you to think about that. Let them speak at the beginning, maybe after the agenda items, and then if necessary, you guys can start figuring out how to address that. I also agree with prohibiting county employees from running on the commission positions. I think it is too strong of a conflict of interest. We all know as much as we love you, um, that you're voting for your raises, your family member raises, and I just think that's too much of a conflict to be appropriate. And I also want to thank the group for moving forward on the Brown House. I think it's about time that that was addressed and taken care of and I appreciate it. So I've talked with a lot of you guys. I've been up here for probably over a decade or more and I know you guys on a personal level. We disagree with some, we dis- we agree with some, um, and I think you guys kind of know my principles. Some of you were elected with those very same principles, but I'm asking you, do you still have those principles? My hope is that people are elected to office because they want to make a positive difference. They want to make things better for the citizens of the county collectively and individually. And you know what motivates you to be here, but elected officials should vote based on the good of the biggest majority, not for what makes themselves bit, um, if it's going to better themselves personally. So that last sentence though, being elected because you want to make a positive difference, was something that I said before this board in June of 2016. Okay? That's almost a decade ago. So this is not something new. I have asked commissioners to figure out what motivates you and to act accordingly for over a decade. For every member of this commission, I'm asking you also today, similar to what she said, as for you and your house, who do you serve? Do you serve yourself? Do you serve the citizens? Who are you going to protect? And if you're against any of these items, I would ask you to look in your heart and really say why. Who are you protecting? Who is the one that will benefit from your decision? And will you protect and serve the ones who have placed their trust in you? Will you serve and protect the ones who've come here tonight and written letters and talked to you in person, placing their faith in the Tennessee constitution? Now, I think I had a little bit different one from what John said, but, um, and we didn't talk, but it's, I had it as a Tennessee constitution, Article one, section one, subsection 19, what says, "We have a right to instruct our representatives and to apply for redress of grievances." That to me goes back to when can people speak to you? Because they, that is a constitutional right in the Tennessee constitution to address you. And the constitution doesn't say, "Well, you can only do it if you have permission." So we're already confining our liberties and our rights. And I'm just asking you to think in terms of, talk about it at the beginning, then you can decide if it's something that needs to be addressed in this meeting versus putting it off for another month. Okay? So my final question to you is, will you be a servant to your citizens or will you vote to be a master? Thank you. And I still had 19 seconds left.
Frank Fox.
My name is Frank Fox. I live in Millersville, 335 Pol Hill Road. I don't know what to say. With all these eloquent speakers. I want to talk about term limits, but it's already been said. I mean, if I read what I've got here, why, uh, it's going to be what you've already heard. So I'm going to give you a different analogy. Do you believe God created the heavens and the earth? Do you believe that he created man and woman? Do you believe that the Bible teaches farmers how to farm? You remember when you read the Old Testament, how the Jews took care of the land and what they did and the times they planted and the times they harvested? My great-granddaddy farmed up in Jackson County and he had corn one season and then he had tobacco in another season and then he let the land lay a season and let the land rest. And I want you to apply that principle to term limits. You may be the commissioners that need fertilizer. You may be the commissioners that need to be plowed up and recultivated. But don't think for one minute that you're the stopper in the tub. And we got to get real with what's going on. And, and, and with all due respect, and I've served as a commissioner in Millersville, I, I, I appreciate what all of you do, but we need to appreciate term limits and what it can do. It'd be like a breath of fresh air. It's hard for us to imagine that. But just as proper land management helps crops be stronger and grow things, proper commission management, if you will, will help things grow better. And, you know, I, I retired in 2008 and I'm still working because the guy that bought my business, he really didn't know what he was doing. And there are some years of experience in this room that can still be a great help to those newbies that come in. And we're afraid of that, but we shouldn't be. My grandson can do more things with a bat wing more than I can. And I don't understand that because I've lived longer than he has. He's smarter than I. He's got a better picture. Think about that. Let's not sell people short because we think that we are into driver's seat and do everything. On the, on the matter of employees serving, it's problematic for the county employee to serve on the Board of Commissioners when they have a direct financial interest in the decisions being made for several reasons. Undermining public trust and objectivity is the big one. Number two, potential for biased decision-making is the second one. And the third one is conflicts with ethical and legal requirements. It reminds me of the story, the old boy that wrote his sweetheart a letter and said, "Honey, I've swam the deepest ocean to see you and I'd climb the highest mountain to see you, but I'll be over tonight if it don't rain." We all have a heart desire to do something, but when it comes to these very, very, very scary edges of public trust, potential for biased decision-making and conflicts of ethical requirements, it's, it's an easy bridge to step off of. It's not worth it. And why do you want to accept it and then have to put up with all the flack that you're going to get from the taxpayers? It's not worth it. Thank you for your time.
Lisa Bracco.
Thank you, sir. My name is Lisa Bracco, 296 Lake Terrace Drive in Hendersonville. Thank you, everybody. To the members of this county commission, there's a well-known saying in Texas, "The smallest dog has the loudest bark." My six-pound Maltese, Shirley Girl, is proof of that. She barked not from power, but from anxiety, fear, and the need to be heard. Lately, I've observed the same dynamic here in the county commission meetings that stretch unnecessarily long, often reflect less about problem-solving and more about posturing. Citing Roberts Rules, this is what it looks like. I've heard it 10 times from some people. I had to look and read it. We talk, the Roberts Rules, questioning the competence of seen, seasoned members or promoting individual agendas rather than serving the public good. I ask each of you, why are you here? Is it to serve or be seen? Representation and responsibility. This commission lacks diversity and gender balance. It does not reflect the full breadth of our community. Representation matters, not for political correctness, but because diverse voices bring a broader perspective and more equitable solutions. Are you representing the quiet voices in the community or just the loudest? When commissioners nominate individuals to boards based on personal alignment rather than qualifications or community input, it erodes public trust. Statements like, "If you don't vote for a certain person, you don't care about a certain moral issue," that weaponize fear instead of promoting honest discussion. Jesus Christ did not draw lines between the wo- the worthy and unworthy, and neither should this body. The true crisis that we need to take care of, the underfunding volunteer fire departments. While this court commission debates term limits or engages in procedural arguments, gets on TV the news, a critical issue is being overlooked, the safety of our community. Our volunteer fire departments are understaffed and underfunded. These folks work full-time jobs and risk their lives to protect our lives, often with outdated equipment and limited support. So we're sitting in here and they're out after hours doing calls to keep people alive. If ISO ratings drop due to lack of investment, homeowners across the county could face doubling insurance premiums. That's unacceptable, not just financially, but morally. This is not a county versus city issue. It's a community safety issue and we must all work together to solve it. I heard you loud and clear last time, sir. A call to action. What are we going to do about this? What we're going to do, a citizens group has been formed to raise funds necessary to address these ISO requirements. This will be a united, united, excuse me, effort involving our schools, our churches, individuals, local organizations, or somebody just rich that you know are famous that wants to give us money. Our young people will be engaged in the process, not just to help fundraise, but to witness what happens when adults lead with an integrity and unity. This isn't optional. Once we fix this, it must become the standard that this commission never neglects the funding of our first responders and firefighters. So let's rebuild then with trust and purpose. Our young people are not voting. Many have lost belief in government, faith, and the idea of the American dream, but we have a chance right now to show them something different, that leadership can mean listening, that government can work, that adults can act with courage and compassion for the next generation. Sumner County has the opportunity to be a model of what community can look like when people set aside ego and their ideas and they want to work for everybody, not themselves, not their group, not their friend, et cetera. I urge you each to reflect on your purpose. Leave behind the fighting, the divisiveness, and lead with humility. We can still come together to fix this, but the time to act is now. And I ask all of us to do that. And I thank you all. And my father's family was in a fire. I thought about that night, why I was so touched by all that. And I'm glad you're okay. Thank you, everybody.
Laura Bager.
Laura Bager, 424 AB Wade Road. I believe so strongly in term limits that I'm going to limit myself tonight. And I find it very interesting, you've heard lots of talk about it, you're going to hear lots more information about it. The only- Also, the resolution for recognizing the public, there are other ways for people to get a hold of you, no doubt. But this is the most effective thing, to look you all in the eye and be able to talk to you, and it's for your benefit, too. Emails and social media are not the way to communicate. This is a much better thing, and it's the easiest way for people to get a hold of you. And finally, I support the public act with county employees not serving on the county legislative body. It's a gaping hole in the law, and the law as it stands now is wholly inadequate. And if you go back to the 2019 property tax increase, you'll see why. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. At this time, we have the report of the chair. And I was, this is where I thought I was gonna be bidding everyone farewell and taking my seat out there, but I found out in the meantime that I have to go through this meeting. So you've got me for one more meeting, folks. But we do have to elect tonight a new chairperson and a new vice-chairperson. There are many very qualified people in the chamber here who can do a good job of maintaining the quorum and doing what needs to be done as the chairperson of this commission. And so at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for a new chairperson. You've seen me for seven years. It's time to look at someone else for a year. Any nominations? All right, Mr. Becker, Commissioner Becker has been nominated. Anyone else?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Matt Schoeff.
Commissioner Matt Schoeff. Pardon? Do you accept that nomination, Mr. Becker? Do you accept that, Mr. Schoeff?
I'd like to nominate Jerry Mansfield.
All right. Mr. Mansfield, do you accept that?
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I would deny that nomination at this time.
Okay. Anyone else? We have two names and nomination, and at that time, so I will call for a vote, seeing that no one is in the queue to nominate anyone else. And I'll ask that the chairperson put Mr. Becker as yes on your button and Mr. Schoeff as no in the order in which they were nominated. So if you're voting for Mr. Becker, you will punch the green button. If you're voting for Mr. Schoeff, you will punch the red button.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
And Mr. Becker receives 14 yes votes and will be our new chairman for next year. And if you do want to take over now, you can. All right, now we will entertain nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Jerry Mansfield.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield has been nominated. Do you accept, Mr. Mansfield?
I do.
Right? Anyone else?
I'll nominate Mark Harrison.
All right, Mr. Mark Harrison. Anyone else? I see no one else in the queue.
I'll nominate Matt Schoeff.
Mr. Schoeff, okay. All right.
I'd nominate Shannon Burke.
I deny that nomination, but thank you for your confidence.
Are you? You decline yours as well. So we have two names, Mr. Mansfield and Mr. Harrison. All right, so Mr., which one was nominated? Pardon?
I just want to make sure that...
Oh, thank you. I got one, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Who was nominated first?
Mansfield.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield will be the green button, and Mr. Harrison will be the red button. You may vote as soon as the clerk declares it open.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
So we have at this time, we don't have a vice chairman. I will ask, I will ask for a 10-minute recess, and you think about this, pray about it if All right, we have round two of the vote coming up, and I will remind you that green is Commissioner Mansfield, red is Commissioner Harrison. So if you will, Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
And Mr. Harrison is elected vice chair of the commission with 13 votes. I hope it works out well for you. We have veteran service report that's attached to your information, financial statement memo, and proclamation on overdose awareness day.
This is a very, very special thing that we're going to do tonight. It's probably one of the most important things that we do in our community, and that's to save lives. We have lots of, you know, our police and our sheriffs, our EMS, but we have people out there that are actually in the community that are taking the time to save lives, to educate, to touch families, to children, to adults. And the biggest thing that the opioid program that we have done for over almost two years now was to bring awareness and help fund programs that are stellar in what they do. Many of, many people don't realize that the money that we got for the opioid abatement program was money that was from pharmacy and pharmaceutical companies who predatorially targeted physicians' offices and falsehoods about opioids and the fact that they were not addicting, and they were. I practice family medicine, and I do psychiatry, and I know what it can do to you. And the people that, even myself, the folks that are out there doing that, that we're gonna recognize tonight, the things they know, I learned from them. And they know a lot about opioid addiction. Every day, people are dying from opioids, fentanyl, drugs that are in our community. We have an epidemic in Sumner County. We have a drug problem. And the more we can educate and reach out to the people that need help, the better we will be. This committee has, we are the best opioid program in the state of Tennessee. We were recognized as that. We partnered with Sumner Regional to incorporate a navigator in the emergency room for people that went to the emergency room who didn't know what to do. Where do I go now? I'm awake, I'm not dead. Now what do I do? And that navigator has been so important. Many of you don't realize that there are people out there that need help, and they need to go into an addiction withdrawal program, and they don't know how to get there. Some people may end up dead because they don't know how to withdraw. These are the programs that help those folks. So we would like to recognize them tonight as they're stellar and they're excellence. So I'm gonna read off the proclamation, and when I read off the name, I'd like you to come forward, please. Whereas overdose deaths continue to tragically take the lives of too many Sumner County residents, causing pain, sorrow, and loss for our friends, family, and community. And whereas the historic opioid settlement provides a critical opportunity for Sumner County to invest in evidence-based overdose prevention strategies to curb the heartbreak-breaking trend. And whereas, over the past year, the Cumberland Heights Foundation, Recovery Court, Inc., Sumner Prevention Coalition, United Neighborhood Health Services were the recipients of the Sumner County Opioid Abatement and Remediation Funds, which are making a positive impact in their program for those with opioid use disorder by off. And whereas, overdose awareness day is a day to remember those in our great state and across the country whose lives have been lost to overdose, to honor family and community grief, to acknowledge and address stigma related to substance use and substance use disorders across the continuum, and to renew our commitment to ending the overdose crisis. Now, therefore, the county commission does hereby proclaim August 31, 2025, as overdose awareness day. In Sumner County, Tennessee, encourage all citizens to join in this worthy observance. And I would like to ask you all, this is the Sumner Coalition, I'm gonna ask them to say something about their program to you. I'm not familiar with you, sir.
Randall Lee, Cumberland Heights Foundation.
Cumberland Heights, Randall Lee. And I'm gonna ask them each to speak about what they do, just a few minutes, and then we'll give you your words.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, so we partner with the county, High Point Health, Volunteer Behavioral Health, EMS, and that program is incredible. We started up in May, we finally got it off the ground and going. That navigator has, to date, has...
room who didn't know what to do. Where do I go now? I'm awake. I'm not dead. Now what do I do? And that navigator has been so important. Many of you don't realize that there are people out there that need help, and they need to go into an addiction withdrawal program, and they don't know how to get there. Some people may end up dead because they don't know how to withdraw. These are the programs that help those folks. So we would like to recognize them tonight as they're stellar and their excellence. So I'm going to read off the proclamation. And when I read off the name, I'd like you to come forward, please. Whereas overdose deaths continue to tragically take the lives of too many Sumner County residents, causing pain, sorrow, and loss for our friends, family, and community. And whereas the historic opioid settlement provides a critical opportunity for Sumner County to invest in evidence-based overdose prevention strategies to curb the heartbreak breaking trend. And whereas, over the past year, the Cumberland Heights Foundation, Recovery Court, Inc., Sumner Prevention Coalition, United Neighborhood Health Services were the recipients of the Sumner County Opioid Abatement and Remediation Funds, which are making a positive impact in their program for those with opioid use disorder by off. And whereas overdose awareness day is a day to remember those in our great state and across the country whose lives have been lost to overdose, to honor family and community grief, to acknowledge and address stigma related to substance use and substance use disorders across the continuum, and to renew our commitment to ending the overdose crisis. Now, therefore, the county commission does hereby proclaim August 31, 2025, as overdose awareness day. In Sumner County, Tennessee, encourage all citizens to join in this worthy observance. And I would like to ask you all, this is the Sumner Coalition, I'm going to ask them to say something about their program to you. I'm not familiar with you, sir. Cumberland Heights, Randall Lee. And I'm going to ask them each to speak about what they do, just a few minutes, and then we'll give you your words.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, so we partner with the county, High Point Health, Volunteer Behavioral Health, EMS, and that program is, it's incredible. We started up in May. We finally got it off the ground and going. That navigator has, to date, has already referred dozens of overdose patients to treatment and withdrawal, or, excuse me, with the, what you're talking about, the volunteer behavioral health. Also, this is just to let you know that you are spending your money wisely. The national trend has been going down a little bit for overdose fatalities. State of Tennessee in the last three years has been seeing between a five and six percent decrease in overdose fatalities. Sumner County, Tennessee, has seen an almost twenty-eight percent decrease in overdose fatalities. So we're doing something right. We've just got to keep doing it. So, thank you, guys.
Nice work, and I really want to commend the work of the navigators throughout the state who are reaching people quickly and getting them linked with treatment services. Cumberland Heights has been treating addiction for nearly sixty years now. We have an office here in Gallatin on Gun Club Drive and have been open here, I believe, twelve years. And through this grant, we've been able to help a number of people. As we are a nonprofit agency, we don't receive federal grants or state grants to serve, and many of our, this opioid abatement council money distributed locally has helped many Sumner County residents access our treatment and complete our treatment program. So we're very grateful that they've had that opportunity and for the council's participation in making that happen. Thank you.
I'd like us all to recognize with a big applause for our folks that are here tonight. And I also want to say one more thing. Our opioid grant manager, Dustin Owens, is probably one of the gifts that we had that was one of the most important things. Mr. Owens helped create our program. He, we have worked with the state, and we have navigated all the little regulations that they have. And it wasn't easy. It wasn't easy to choose. But I want you just to know that these folks are heroes, and I'd like you all to give them an applause.
Written reports of the county officials are in your paperwork. We will ask the clerk now to place notaries on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Do we have a motion? Let me, I'm sorry. In a second, all right. It receives twenty-two affirmative votes.
You vote yes?
We're having a little bit of trouble. We've had a blackout up here with my computer and several, so we're having a little bit of difficulty here this evening. Reporters standing committees, health and emergency services. Education. Highway.
No report, no meeting, again.
General operations.
Resolution twenty-five oh eight dash zero six is to approve the storybook trail along Station Camp Greenway. This came before Gen Ops, and the ladies were asking, basically, it's something that's done in collaboration with cities. The main spirit of this resolution really is whenever this is going to happen, the request was in this resolution that all literature that's going to be installed needs to have prior approval of the Sumner County Commission before they just go and install it. They had mentioned this is what the City of Hendersonville requested of them, and BOMA passed it a, passed a resolution or ordinance asking, requiring them to come before them for anything that was part of the Hendersonville portion. I thought that was a good idea, at least that the committee did as well. And so I so moved to approve this.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A quick question on this one. Who actually owns the Storybook Trail project? So who's putting the books together? Who would own that? Good question for the chairman of the.
Are you addressing the chairman of the general operations?
Would like to direct that toward him, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The chairman of general operations.
Mr. Mansfield.
I can't remember the name of the group. They came before us in June. The county mayor had asked to pull it back, but we were concerned about whenever this came back forward and forward the commission. One thing was discussed unanimously with Gen Ops was that no matter whenever this comes back before the commission, that whoever's in charge of doing this countywide, they do it for the City of Hendersonville's trails, I guess they do it for Gallatins, was that the request basically that any literature that they're proposing, and they have usually a list, what they did is they brought a list before the City of Hendersonville, and BOMA approved, pre-approved the literature to be on the storybook trail. And so our request with this resolution is whenever that comes back to the full commission, that the commission would approve the books, that the literature that's going to be a part of that trail that Sumner County is involved with. And that's the main purpose of this.
That doesn't, well, it answers the question, but also, I guess, my neighbor here pointed out, it's the Sumner County Health Committee is who brought this forward, because my understanding is, is that they've pulled that back because they don't want to own it. They don't want to do this project. So it's, I'm not against what this says, but it's, we're approving a project that actually has no owner of the projects. There's no one that actually is going to do anything with this.
I'll just say that that was never expressed. That's the first I've heard of that. Nobody's ever expressed, shared that with the general operations committee. So I'm just curious how the commissioner came about that information, because that was not told to the committee by the county mayor at all.
It would appear to me that this would be the safe thing to do regardless.
Correct. Should it come back before the commission at any time in the future, that it would require county commission approval. And that's what the spirit of this resolution was.
All in favor say aye. Oppose light sign. All right.
Resolution twenty-five oh eight dash zero seven is to direct the health department electricity to be solely utilized for the health department. There was discussion from the finance department. Basically, should any other arrangement be made, this would put the health department project in jeopardy of being on time, because everything would have to be resubmitted to the state. So basically, if the schools want to reinstall their own meter and hook up their own electricity, it's by their own purview to do that. The recommendation from both Gen Ops and I guess budget was that the county proceed with just hooking out the electricity for the health department when that's needed, based on the project and based on the parameters. So it doesn't derail this project. An ISO move.
All right, motion and a second. Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't know if the committee is aware or not, but the school's already got the electricity hooked up, and this is not even an issue anymore. This issue's already been resolved where the power was disconnected, and the school's already paid, and they've already got their own line ran into the building. So unless we're planning on doing something outside of, with the health department electricity, I think this is a, something that's, again, this is, I don't see where this is, has a lot to do with anything.
Right. And I see the director of school shaking his head that that's correct. However, I think it's like what I said before, there would just be a safe thing to go ahead and put this in right.
I think it's great, because I guess it's the first time I've heard it. It wasn't expressed to the commission, to the committee members. And so it's just interesting that none of this information's being actually relayed to the chairman of these committees. So I so moved to approve this.
All in favor say aye. Oppose light sign.
Resolution twenty-five oh eight dash zero eight is to direct if any local funding required for SR two five eight, Old Drake's Creek Road intersection improvements be done, borne equally between the county and the city of Hendersonville. Basically, we were told in Gen Ops that there is, it's going to be, I think it was a couple million more dollars. I can't remember if the finest director can correct me if I'm wrong. And right now, Hendersonville came to the county and asking the county to bear responsibility for this project. It was a request by the City of Hendersonville to do this project, and the City of Hendersonville was putting up half the cost, around two hundred fifty thousand dollars, as well as the county. This was done in December of 2021 when this was approved. And this is a request, basically, since we're being surprised with millions and more dollars of overages, that any extra costs that have to apply towards that, the City of Hendersonville would bear those costs equally, since we've done this at their request. An ISO move.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one was, not that I'm against this, but I'm just, when does general operations start handling roads? This just seems to be out of place. And my question would be, has, has this seen the highway committee? Has the highway committee reviewed this at all?
Mr. Chairman, can you answer that?
It's not a county road. It's a state road. And this project has been, via the finance department, it's come through Gen Ops the whole time, and the planning department soon.
So again, it's, it's a road, and so roads go through our highway department.
It's not a county road, so it's not going to go through the highway department. It's not a county road. It's a state road.
Okay. All right. That was, I just saw that, and was like, I just didn't understand why general operations would be handling roads. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? No. That's okay. All right. All in favor say aye. Oppose light sign.
Twenty-five oh eight dash zero nine is to, just to direct commissioner photos not be taken no later than the third month after beginning of the term. I guess this was brought forward in Gen Ops. There was a citizen that had made a comment to one of the commissioners on the committee. I guess that there are photos taken every year, every term, and there are no, this commission does not have photos, a representation out there in the hall, and a citizen brought that up. So basically, just to, you know, the Bible says, give honor to who honors do. I'm not sure why, three years into our term, that that hasn't been done yet. So I guess it would just direct that, hey, if a new commission comes in, get photos taken, you know, put the appropriate photo up in the hall, and they, but I would request that the county mayor would go ahead and do that now for this commission. I, as much as I didn't agree with the previous county mayor on many things, one thing I can give him props on is taking care of stuff like this inexpediently. So I so move.
Okay, a motion and a second. Commissioner Ring.
I don't want to take away another commissioner's thunder, but why is this going through general operations? It doesn't make sense. This could be done with a discussion. I think we're micromanaging here, and I think we don't need to be doing that. We've got bigger fish to fry.
All right. Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for this one, the resolution just says it directs. Who are we directing?
I guess anybody that'll listen.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that we're putting together a resolution that just directs somebody, somewhere, to do something. I feel like that we should be a little bit more clear in what we're, we're putting in the resolution as far as directing, so.
I think probably it would be to the administrator of the county, which would be the mayor. I'm just assuming.
That, and I, you know, as far as language, we can ask, please ask nicely if you would do it. Direct, I don't care what you say, versus like, hey, would you please do this? And I'll amend the resolution to say that. But it is kind of silly that we have to do these things, but it's just unfortunate that the political climate that we're in and the reality of what we're at, having to do now.
If this passes, we will be very, very, very nice.
It was just a request to say, hey, can we please do this? And a citizen brought this up to attention to a commissioner, and a commissioner brought this forward to Gen Ops. So we put it on the agenda and said, oh, yeah, I didn't, personally didn't know that that was an oversight.
I may be missing facial indications here, but I think the mayor is looking very favorable. So Commissioner Jones?
I would just like to ease Commissioner Nguyen's concerns, to give the, the nature by which this came about. I requested that because it came to my attention, and it was thought that it was possibly just an oversight, hadn't been done yet. So we put a time and a date on when it's done by, to have a date that wouldn't be forgotten or slipped because of things being busy going on. So we attached a date and a timeline to it, just so future commissions will have something to look forward. It was by no means any disrespect or anything like that. So we just thought it'd be helpful.
Commissioner Pomeroy.
I don't want to be, extend this, but could we amend this to go ahead and ask nicely to do the one for this commission?
Second.
I mean, just if we're going to do it, in this.
Now, what is your amendment?
Just to politely ask whoever we're going to ask, commissioner photos to be taken no less than third month and get this commission's photos taken.
Okay. Everybody's in agreement, right? Say aye, please. Oppose, okay.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Nguyen, did you have something else? Commissioner Brown, did you have something? Commissioner Byrd, Dorff, are you?
Headed, I was just headed gang, sorry.
Okay, all right. Committee on committees?
Yes, sir. On everyone's desk, there is a slate for the committee, for the commission committees. It should look like this. Out of committee on committees by majority vote, we voted to group and approve the total slate, and I so move.
All right. Now, this is, to vote on these as a slate, this is what came out of the committee.
Yes.
There's a motion and a second. Now, let me explain what the county attorney has said to me in his research of this. Even though we're saying that we want to vote on this as a slate, he is, and you tell me if I'm wrong on this, he is saying that we probably would be best to go committee by committee, allowing anyone to specifically nominate someone, even though we're presenting it as a slate, to that committee. For instance, so everyone will understand this, we could say, I would like to have Commissioner Klein, nominate Commissioner Klein to take Commissioner Hyde's place on budget, and then we would have to vote if there'll be a change to the slate. Does everyone understand that? Because I didn't for a while. Does everyone understand? Any question? Did I explain that correctly? So we have voted for a slate. We'll go committee by committee to see if you want to make any nominations or changes. Budget committee, do we need to make a motion and a second for each individual committee?
That's what I would recommend, sir.
Okay, motion? Do we have a motion first before we get to the queue? Motion and a second. All right. Okay. All right, Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I object to this slate of candidates. It has been public knowledge for less than an hour, and does not meet the criteria for this commission meeting. The originally scheduled meeting was canceled under very suspicious circumstances. No explanation was ever given canceling the committee by the committee chairman. There is no way a pre-selected slate of candidates for all of the committees could have been voted on in four minutes unless there had been prior deliberation in private. Some of the committee members had not even seen the slate. Committee on committee vote for these candidates was a rubber stamp vote on what they had already predetermined for public show. Where's our favorite law happy, lawsuit happy citizen when you need her? Or does she even care that there is such an obvious infraction of the sunshine law? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just wondering where the evidence is that this was a pre-selected slate. I mean, we're throwing around accusations pretty quickly. And if I recall, Mr. Chairman, and you please correct me if I'm wrong, but when we first took office, we didn't vote on these individually. We were presented a slate, and we voted on it. We were presented a slate, and we voted on it. So just pointing that out as reference.
Okay, well, we've had two people here speaking in different, in different directions on this issue. I would like to recommend to you, this could be a very, very long process. There is no sense in drawing it out. We've heard sentiments on both sides, and I just lost the computer. So, but we, what we're down to now, we have a Committee that has been nominated, and we are calling for names to be submitted. If you have a nomination, then let us know what it is and where you want that name to be placed. Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Terry Boyd to the Budget Committee. Also Jeremy Mansfield to the Budget Committee.
Wait, the Attorney says you can only do one.
Okay, I'll do Terry Boyd.
All right, do you accept Ms. Boyd? And who are you knocking off the Committee?
I'm not going to knock anybody off that Committee. It's.
You obviously are, though. What, I mean, you've got to give me a name.
That's for the Committee to decide. We vote individual, we've done it for three years, we do slates sometimes, we do two slates sometimes, we do individuals sometimes, and we do whoever gets thirteen moves on. So I'm not going to say knock somebody off, I'm not going to do that to any one of my fellow Commissioners. I'm going to let the Committee, the Commission decide who is the better of the candidates on that slate of eight, and seven of them are going to get elected.
It was chosen to do this by slate, which is by motion. The only way to do it by motion is to do amendments till you get to the final, till you basically call the question, so that's where we're at. That's what y'all voted on to do was the slate process. If you want to go to the four nomination process, then this one has to be voted down, and we go to that process. Otherwise, he's got to replace a name as an amendment.
So, what, so is he correct, then, in what he's saying, that he doesn't have to suggest a name?
No, he's not.
No, he needs to suggest a name. No.
This, would you like?
Yes, yes. Let's, I might ask the Attorney to speak to this.
There's two processes. There's doing this from the floor, and then there's doing the slate process. You have to pick a process before you do the Committee. Once that process is picked, that's the way you go. The vote was to do it by slate, slate's treated as a motion. That's, I'm just going off of which Roberts rules says.
We've not voted to do it by slate.
That's what this started as.
Wait just a moment.
That's my understanding.
Whoever recognized anyone before you speak, go ahead and finish what you're saying.
If it is chosen not to do the slate, you want to do four nominations, then that's fine as well. You take up all the nominations, and then you vote in the order of the nominations until the, all the seats are filled on that Committee. But my understanding was, when this first opened up, that this was going to be a slate motion.
The rules allows anybody to make a nomination at any time. If nomination don't cease until people stop nominating, it doesn't.
Roberts rules, if you start with fifty eleven, Roberts rules says that you will vote on So this can't be done both ways. It has to be decided on by the Commission which process you're going to use. You want to do four nominations, that's fine. There's a process for that. You want to do slate nominations, that's how it needs to be.
Well, we've already voted for slate nominations, so tell us what we need to do.
It's treated, the slate is treated as a motion.
We did not vote for slate.
Mr. Chairman, we've not voted. We've not voted. All kinds of motion.
All right, well then I'm open for a motion.
I'll motion to vote as a slate.
Vote as a slate and a second.
I'm making an amendment, Mr. Chairman, that we vote as individuals. Mr. Chairman, we have to, I apologize, I'm not aware of it, but in one case.
Case Mr. Becker is on Budget Committee, he's been appointed as the Chair, so we have to replace him. So I don't, if we vote as a slate, we're going to have a problem here, so we're going to.
What we've always done in the past is whoever is elected Chairman, and that's what happened when I became Chairman, those Committees will be sent to the next meeting of the Committee on Committees to make recommendations.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Jones?
So in the past, we've voted slates of Library Board members, and then we've amended it and voted from the floor for nominations in between, then we go back to slate voting, then we go back to whoever has the majority out of, we've mixed it up so many times, I don't see why it matters. Nonetheless, if we do slate voting, you're saying we still have the option for me to nominate one person to swap out somebody else, and that will be the slate that we vote on?
Yes.
Those nominations.
No, we'll vote on that person.
Right, whether they make it to the slate or not. And then somebody else can nominate another person, whether they make it to that slate or not. And then somebody else can nominate a person, see if they make that slate. Eventually, all nominations are exhausted, and we'll eventually vote on that slate.
That's what.
I don't see six of one half dozen of the others, but that's fine, if that's the way you want to do it.
All right, the motion has been made, and I think it's appropriate at this time. Is anyone in the queue wanting to speak on the motion and the second of going as a slate? All right.
We went all the way back. No one's picked a method yet. There's been a motion to do it in a second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, and no one should be speaking to anything except that motion at this point. Commissioner Roger?
Call questions.
All right, questions being called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Mr. Hyde, I was in the queue before, Mr. Roger.
All right, place it on the board.
Maybe in the queue.
Are you voting on the question?
We're voting on the question.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
It does not receive sixteen votes, it receives a majority, but not sixteen votes. So we are back to how we're going to do this. All right, now, anyone, Commissioner Brown, is it to speak on this?
Yes.
On the method?
Nominate. No, we have got to vote.
We're voting on how to select.
Well.
I can make a nomination, that, and it's out of order for anybody to not allow me to nominate from the floor.
Not at this time. It's not open for nominations at this time.
We've already made one.
Commissioner Pomeroy? Was this, you were in the queue?
No, I just thought we were voting on the process, and then anybody can make all their nominations, that's, that's all.
Commissioner Sho.
Mine is not on this, it's a nomination to swap out Mr. Becker, so we'll wait.
Commissioner Teichner?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure I got this straight, that you're suppressing everyone's chance to nominate. And also, by the movement of last week's Committee on Committees to this week, you're suppressing the public's chance to speak about it. And then I tried to make an amendment before the main motion, which we always do, Roberts rules, we vote on the amendment, clear the amendment, and then go to the main motion. I know that's true. And then our Attorney even gave us advice that I don't agree with, but none of that matters, is that what you're saying? Like, we're just not going to do, we're going to pretend we're having a Commission meeting? Is that what the plan is today?
Yeah, well, thank you for your comments. Anything else?
I guess not.
Okay. Commissioner Sho?
I'm just putting myself back in queue for when this gets settled, and I would like, I'm going to make a nomination.
All right. There, we were ready to vote on a method of doing this, but Commissioner Jones?
I would just like to ask our Law Director what makes this different than the slate voting we've done in the past, where we have, we have mixed and matched slates with individual candidates. We've done it for three years. I would just like an explanation on why tonight is different. Because I was asked to research this due to the anticipated events that would transpire, and how it's been done in the past apparently has not been done in accordance with Roberts rules. The standing rules and procedures are fairly silent on most of this, which kicks us back over to Roberts rules, and the only thing we're at now is merely selecting a process. Once that process is picked, then there's two different methods.
And let me say, I don't know who asked him to do research, but it was not me. I did not know we were going through this method. It is different from anything I'm used to until I got here. So I don't know who asked for the research, but we have it now, we have an opinion from the Attorney on what it ought to be. So Commissioner Teichner?
I, again, make the amendment that we vote on these not as a slate, amending the slate motion, and we can just vote. I guess you're right.
All right, exactly.
Yeah, a no vote on the slate means you want the four nomination, that's all this is doing.
All right, so you've made a motion for the slate. No.
He wants to do the other.
He wants to do the other. You've made a motion and a second. All right, so let's vote on that, if we'll do it that way. All right.
Does everyone vote on what the voting?
No. But we'll vote anyway.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Okay, Commissioner Pomeroy's motion passed fourteen to nine, so that's the method. And you've heard what the Attorney has said that we would do, and now if I understood what you said correctly, Mr. Attorney, we, if someone wants to present a name for budget, that they should give that name, and what position?
It would be a replacement.
A replacement name, is what the County Attorney says. So does anyone have a name to present? Commissioner Sho?
Yes, so I just want to be clear here that I am able to make a nomination, but I, according to the way, I'm not arguing one way or the other, because I'm not spun up enough on this rule to argue one way or the other, but according to our Attorney's interpretation, if I am to make a nomination, I have to strike someone. Is that the case?
Yes.
Okay. So I would like to nominate, and this is, I've served with Mr. Becker, he's a wonderful partner on Budget Committee, and congratulations to him for beating me soundly earlier, but because of this, he won't be able to serve on Budget, and so I'd like to go in with a full slate, and I'd like to nominate Mr. Brown for that role.
Second.
All right, motion and a second for Mr. Brown. I'm assuming that we would vote at this time on whether or not we would make that swap before another name is presented. All right. Debate on these two names or not?
Yes, you can.
All right, debate on these two names only, nothing else, nothing broader, but Commissioner Jones said no, Commissioner Mansfield, no, Commissioner Teichner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very confused now, because, so we're debating on whether Mr. Brown?
Whether you want Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, or, or our new Chairman, who won't be able to be on there, or eligible? We're arguing that.
He can be on there.
He can be on there as Chairman?
I was named to the Health and Emergency Services Committee as a regular member while Chairman, so yes, he can.
Okay.
All right, we are ready to vote. Mr. Brown will be green, Mr. Becker will be red.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, Mr. Becker will be, unless he, later on, after he does, thinking about it, will be a regular member of the Budget Committee. All right, any other nominations? Commissioner Jones?
I'd like to nominate Terry Boyd for Budget in place of Dylan Lambeth.
Second.
Sorry, Dylan.
All right, do you accept Ms. Boyd?
I'll be on Budget, yes.
You accept the nomination?
Yes.
All right, we are ready to vote on that. Mrs., Mr. Dylan will be green, and Ms. Boyd will be the red button.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Mr. Lambeth is a member of the Budget Committee. Any other nominations, Mr. Mansfield?
I'm going to nominate for Budget Committee, Ms. Mary Janone?
For?
For Budget Committee.
For whom?
I don't agree with the rules that say I've got to replace somebody, so I, we've never, I've never seen that before, I mean, to have a right to nominate somebody.
I have not either, but obviously somebody.
I'm not going to recommend, so I'm giving you eight names to vote for.
Well, I'd have to ask if that would be acceptable. Would that be acceptable, Mr. Attorney?
And I'll call for a roll call vote for all names.
Second.
The Attorney says that's not his interpretation.
I mean, I'm nominating Ms. Mary Janone, I don't, I've never seen anything, Roberts rules is that I've got to take somebody away, it's just I can make a nomination type of thing, so.
All right, we'll put my name up there then. Is that all right with you?
You're already on Budget, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
Your name's already on there as a recommendation.
Is that all right?
If you want to make an amendment to my amendment, I guess.
Well.
Didn't we vote on the process? The process was, if you nominated somebody, you had to, I can respect my fellow Commissioners' fans disagrees, but vote as a place, that's what we voted as a body to do.
I think I would entertain a motion for someone to say that we will not vote on anyone, and see what the feeling of the body is, that we will not vote on anyone unless there is a name given. And I'd like for the, I'd like for the clerk to put that on the board, just so we'll know where we're going from here, because we've got to know.
I'll make that motion, just so it's proper that.
All right, motion made and seconded, so we'll put that on the board. See what the will of the body is. You want to accept the Attorney's opinion on this or not? To have a person nominated and a name to be taken off if they're nominated? To have a person nominated and a name to be taken off if, if they're nominated?
I do respect that. I do think that's what we already voted for, uh, in my first motion that passed.
I, I think, I think you're right, but we'll reaffirm it here.
Thank you, sir.
Each commissioner records your vote.
And fourteen commissioners here have said that's the way we'll do business and that's the only way we'll accept a name, so that-
So, Commissioner Mary Janong and I'm going to replace, um, Commissioner Becker.
Commissioner Becker, all right. Uh, Commissioner Becker will, uh, be, uh, red. Uh, who was the name?
Commissioner Mary Janong.
Janong will be green, all right?
Each commissioner records your vote.
Mr. Becker is still on the Budget Committee.
I nominate.
All right. Mr. Teichner?
Yes, sir. I nominate, uh, Commissioner Mansfield and I vote to replace Commissioner Bergdorf.
Uh, all right, uh, we will, uh, put Mr. Mansfield as, uh, red and Ms., uh, Bergdorf is green.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Would you keep that, please, sir?
Ms. Bergdorf is green. All right, Ms. Bergdorf is still on the committee. Uh, Mr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I will nominate, uh, Ms. Boyd, Commissioner Boyd for Becker.
Where did he go?
No.
No.
We didn't do that specifically.
Ms. Boyd for Mr. Becker. So, Ms., uh, Mr. Becker will be green, Ms. Boyd will be red.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, uh, the red was, uh, Boyd, okay. So, Ms. Boyd will be a member of the, uh, Budget Committee. Commissioner Jones?
I'd like to nominate, um, Commissioner Mansfield for Budget in place of, thank you for nominating yourself as a replacement, um, Mr. Hyde, um, but, yeah, for Commissioner Mansfield for Commissioner Hyde.
For me?
On, on Budget.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm, I'm deeply hurt. Okay. All right. Uh, uh, Hyde will be green and Mansfield will be red.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Hyde will stay on it, uh, Budget. Uh, Commissioner Shoef? Have you made a nomination already, Commissioner Shoef?
I have. This is not a nomination. I'm on the question.
All right. Call the question in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Pose lights, say aye.
That's not a order.
Call of the question is, call for, call the question is never out of order. No. Place it on the board, Madam-
I'd like to roll in from Law Director, please. You cannot have those nominations.
The Law Director is not the parliamentarian. I accept advice from him. Pardon?
I'm going by what he says. I vote on this as a slate. So, why can't we?
I ask advice from him all the time.
Six, six. He says you cannot do that. This is against law. It's against, it's against- I believe it passed, Mr. Timmons, you put it on board. Guess if I forgot.
Uh, what is your opinion on that, Mr. Attorney?
Uh, based on, uh, fifty thirteen E, it says that this is treated as a motion and I don't know why you couldn't call the question on the motion.
Uh, I've always heard that the call for the question is in order. All right, place that on the board, Madam-
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, please.
Place it on the board.
One good question, Mr. Chairman. I actually believe that fellow chairman, I mean, the fellow commissioner should be able to vote Roberts rules.
Place it on board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
This is illegal.
Calling a question.
Mr. President.
I'm not voting on that.
Well, the question, uh, lacks one vote anyway, so we're back to where we were. Uh, Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that nominations be closed and the slate be voted on.
One more question.
Actually, you can. You can, and it's Roberts rules.
Based on what?
Roberts rules. Forty-six, six, you cannot close nominations. There's no such thing.
Would you read that? Uh, Mr. Jones has the floor. Commissioner Brown?
Motion to close nominations are usually unnecessary because the nomination process simply continues until no one wishes to make further nominations. When the nominations stop, the chair just declares nominations closed after making sure that no more nominations are forthcoming. Customarily, although it's not required, the chair accomplishes this by calling three times for more nominations. According to Roberts rules, a motion to close nominations is out of order as long as any member wishes to make a nomination.
Amen. Is that clear?
All right, Commissioner Rain?
Do we have any current motions on the floor?
I don't think so.
I move that we accept the Budget Committee as it is here.
Uh, Commissioner Pomeroy?
So, in theory, because we, we all see what's happening, it's kinda odd, um, when it was the other way around, but anyways, uh, so one commissioner based off, is, can just sit here all night long and just say, I wanna make another nomination. I wanna make another nomination. It, to infinity. There's no, like, there's no end. I was always thought that we choose to act under Roberts rules and that if we decide to vote, and then we vote.
If we had one other person, then what question could they call?
I'm just trying to, yeah. Uh, and we voted for something, because if not, I mean, clearly, we're down to like the same two people just making nominations over and over and over and over and over and over again. Fourteen-nine, 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 fourteen-nine. I, 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 I don't, it's about to be thirty-nine, um, but I, I just don't know what our process, three years ago before, I just wanna, we sat here one night, there's people who are here, and we started writing names down for like hours until the own party who was trying to do that got tired of that and we stopped what we were doing mid, like, just mid thing. There was never a vote and I see other commissioners, like, literally, like, we are in SNL skit. Like, this is, this is a, this is a clown show. I'm getting, I would like to add a word of the gentleman beside me speaking directly to me. I mean, we did that. We sat right here, we were passing around paper, and about two hours in, somebody goes, this is never gonna end. And there was somebody who was sitting right here who said, if we do it this way, it's never gonna end. And then two hours later, we just aborted what we did. So, I, I, I just don't know where we're going, because we are not getting out of here. I, I can assure you, it's just gonna be, I need another. How do we get past that? I, that's all. I just wanna do the people's business. I heard people in comments say, we argue and we fight and we throw Roberts rules up in each other's faces and we just wanna bicker. I mean, just vote. I mean, like, moving a name and then this name and then that name is doing nothing but just trying to, I, I, I don't know, like, just, just vote. But what, what do we do? I mean, what, what's the end? I'm asking the Law Director, you, like, if, there's, if I say something, they'll holler and say, I can't make a motion. I mean, can we not make a motion of a number of limitations or, I mean, is this like a filibuster where I can literally sit here all night and just every time just pick a different combination?
I don't know. This, this is new for me tonight, doing this this way and, um-
That's all I got.
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion on the floor. And second.
What is your motion?
My motion was to vote on the slate, to vote on the current names for the Budget Committee. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any?
No, then this is that closing nomination, that's voting nomination. Same thing, we just talked.
What is your opinion? Can we do that?
Would you like me to speak to this?
Yes.
All right. We're under appointment of committees. This is section fifty-one-one. This is not under forty-six. It specifically references committees, that's why I'm in that section. And of the two that get used, there's the floor nomination, which, yes, you can make nominations and you keep making nominations till you have no more nominations. Then you vote on all the nominations in the order that they were made. If that's the project, process you choose to go, then that's what you need to vote on. The, the slate process was chosen here and the rules specifically say this is a motion process. We know Roberts rules goes into great detail on how motions are gonna be handled. They can, uh, be amended, they can have the question called, so if you choose that process, that's the process you're going down. So, at the beginning of these committee selections, that's what needs to be decided. Which way do you wanna go to attack this? So, that's my interpretation of Roberts rules. It's spelled out in the committee section.
And we did vote to do it as a slate.
So, is that motion in order?
No.
Are we, I don't know, did we kill the other motion?
We're not in committee.
Yes.
We're on the floor.
Commissioner?
What's that?
Rain?
Mr. Attorney, we're, we're not in committee.
You're, you're not being recognized now, Commissioner. You're not being recognized now, thank you.
For clarification, this section is appointment of committees. So, if we're still on the slate process, then the question can be called, because it's a motion, it says so. We can, uh, if the, if, call the question doesn't pass, we go back into the same motion process everybody's been doing in the past.
That's true. So, nominations can be closed?
Because a motion process was chosen. On the next committee, if you wanna go the other route, then you decide, y'all vote to go the, uh, floor nomination route and then that goes exactly as has been described. Nominations continue to come in until there are no more nominations. One commissioner gets to make a nomination until all nominations have been made, then a commissioner can make another nomination. When they're closed, the nominations will be voted on in that order of nomination and once the seats are filled, the votes are over, regardless of who's left out there to vote on. So, it's all about the order of the nominations.
So, am I hearing you correctly that, that he can make this motion?
Yes.
All right. And he, there was a second?
Second.
All right.
I'd like to speak to the motion.
Commissioner Jones?
I'd like to speak to that motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, motion to, um, call the question is usually done at the chair's discretion with reasonable debate being had. That's, you give, give a little leeway, so there's a reasonable amount of debate and it's usually after commissioners had, had a chance to speak. Um, we've had like five people try to be nominated out of twenty-four for a committee of seven. I don't think that's reasonable debate. We've not had, everybody's not had opportunities to put people forward. I've got a whole list of people that I wanna put forward. So, other people may have the same thing. Give other people a chance to, to speak on this.
We, we do not have that amount of time, though.
I've got all the time in the world. I'll stay all night for my constituents.
Well, you'll be by yourself.
That's what I signed up for. I signed up to be here for my constituents. I'm not in a hurry. I ate a good hearty supper, got plenty of sleep. That's how important it is to me. A lot of people are passionate about these committee assignments and it was stated by the committee on committees chairman that the, everybody got their first or second choice. That is not true. If you look at general operations, that is not true. There's people on there that didn't even ask to be on there as their first or second choice.
All right. Anyone else?
It's not transparent.
Anyone else wanna speak on this? Commissioner Shoef?
I have things to my nomination.
All right.
My motion is-
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is not a, this is not a motion to reconsider, it's, I mean, it's not a motion to, to, um, to call a vote on whether or not to vote on the motion. This is a motion basically to cease nominations and to vote on the matter. Thank you.
All right. And it is seconded?
I would vote, and I'd like to give a few more.
On that?
On this.
All right.
And, guys, look, we know how this is gonna go. We can, there is, we just watched a lot of them. There's thirteen to nine, thirteen to nine, thirteen to nine. It used to be fourteen to eight, some, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna, we, we, we can do this all night. It is what it is. You know, I, I will never forget my fellow commissioner sitting here in my front left on my very first commission night and he said, when we were going through this, he said, I'm gonna take my medicine. Said, I'm gonna take my medicine. And sometimes that's what you just gotta do, you know? I mean, things change. This is a, this is a power struggle and we're gonna go through it and, and there's, there's fighting for things that matter and that's important and, and I, I very much intend to fight for things that matter. I've done it, I've made probably everybody in here anger at one point or other. And then there's just fighting for show. And what's gonna happen tonight, it is very clear, we're just fighting for show because there's gonna be thirteen votes to nine votes on pretty much everything. So, uh, echoing what our chairman has said many times, we can, we all know how this is gonna go. If we wanna make a show of it, that's fine, but we all know how we're gonna vote. So, I, given that nothing, nothing, and this should make you maybe a little bit angry, nothing you do, nothing you say, nothing that anybody says is gonna make a difference because this has been decided and this way it's gonna be.
Thanks.
I don't like it, but it is what it is.
All right. Commissioner Lambeth?
Yeah, I just need some, uh, reminding. Can you remind me in our rules who the parliamentarian is each night? Is it the, is it you, Mr. Chairman, or is it the, the Law Director?
Yep.
The parliamentarian of our meetings?
The Law Director.
The Law Director is the parliamentarian? So, if we-
Well, I'm the parliamentarian.
Right, you are, okay. So, and if we wanted to overrule that, it's a two-thirds vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, as much as I've enjoyed all the outbursts tonight, I would like to remind that it's been entertaining, um, but at the end of the day, whatever you say, uh, as the chairman of this is what we're gonna have to go with. And I understand that we've all become Roberts rules experts tonight, uh, but I would like to get our business done that we have after this and go home and not just be a champion of the people, because I can stay here till two AM. I don't know about everybody else, I don't think clearly at that early, uh, whether I can stay here or not. So, I would like to urge everyone, as my fellow commissioner said, uh, we all can see what's happening, we can all see what's going on, we all also have sat here for three years and know that anything comes out of these committees, we're gonna have another chance to speak on. And I would like to remind everyone that and that should make us all feel better, that whatever happens, these committees has to come right back here and we get to do this same song and dance again.
All right. We, we're on this motion to, for nominations to cease and I don't want you speaking unless you are speaking specifically on why they should not cease. Uh, anyone wanting to speak on that? Teichner? Commissioner Teichner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason why it's so important, I love what everyone's said, but the most important reason is because I sat here last month, I've sat here many months, and I've watched this commission majority vote to remove things that the people wanted to speak on from our agenda. It's extremely important and it's- And it's, it's a fool's game to say it's not. And I want to make sure that I clarify something for you, sir, the parliamentarian. We get two amendments, correct, to every motion that's made in this way that we've decided? I'm not even going to argue that. But there's two motions in Robert's Rules, correct? I mean, two amendments to the motion, correct? And then what happens if there's a third?
You don't hear it.
You don't hear it. So you had to vote on the second, clear it out? And then if there's not another amendment, we vote on the other one. But we vote on as many amendments as we need to in order to get the people's business done. And it seems ridiculous. It does. But I didn't ask for this. This is what was brought to us a couple minutes before commission. And this is also what was brought to us, that we were said that we couldn't vote individually. It would have been a lot easier on everybody. It's what we've done every year for the eternity of this county, all the way back to the beginning. But we voted, I didn't, just clarify. The majority ruled that we would do it this exact way. So this is the way we will do it. And if that means there's extra amendments that go on top of, that's what we'll do. But I'll do whatever the parliamentarian wishes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. But I will, will say, I want to remind everyone that we're speaking to this motion. We're wandering off from that, or speak to this motion for that, for things to cease. Commissioner Mansfield?
Tagging along, my fellow commissioner said this is an amendment to the main motion, and I have every right to make this amendment. And my amendment's a nomination for Commissioner Mary Janong to replace Commissioner Lambeth. I know Commissioner Janong, I think she wants to be on Budget Committee. That's my amendment to the main motion. As a nomination.
Second.
I'm not sure. I'm going to ask the advice of the attorney before I make a judgment on that. But if the motion is for nominations to cease, I don't know that we could accept an amendment for additional nominations. We'd have, he says we have to clear up his motion first before there are other nominations. Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Roger? Question's been called, and a second. I'll ask the clerk to place that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
That receives fifteen affirmative votes. Mr. Mansfield, your motion now?
I made my amendment.
For?
To the main motion. My amendment to the main motion was to replace Commissioner Lambeth with Commissioner Janong. That's my nomination.
All right. Commissioner Lambeth is green, and Commissioner Janong is red.
Board of Information, it must be a motion and an amendment at the same time? I mean, a nomination and a motion at the same time? It's an amendment. You can't stop an amendment we talk about. Order of consent. But if you call it a motion and a motion... Because you chose this, we can make amendments now. You guys chose this. You'll live with it.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Lambeth is green, Commissioner Janong is red.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Commissioner Lambeth is still on the Budget Committee. Commissioner Teichner?
Yes, sir, I'd like an amendment to, uh, fellow commissioners.
Motion. And I nominate, before anything closes, I nominate Commissioner Klein to take the place of Commissioner Harrison.
He's already on the Budget. He's on the Budget.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. See what happens when we get the, get our slate right before the thing gets confusing.
It's kind of late, isn't it? Commissioner Jones?
Well, sir, I adjust that, then, I'm sorry. And I make a, I make a motion that we replace Commissioner Harrison with Commissioner Pomeroy.
Second.
Okay. That ends it. Commissioner Jones?
My amendment to Commissioner Ring's motion to, to take the vote on the budget is after replacing Commissioner Harrison with Commissioner Bob Brown.
Second.
All right. Mr. Brown will be red, Mr. Harrison will be green.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Mr. Harrison gets thirteen votes, and he is still on the Budget Committee. Commissioner Teichner?
Make a motion that we replace Commissioner Harrison with Commissioner Smith Miller.
With whom?
He said Miller.
Miller. All right. Commissioner Miller will be red, Commissioner Harrison will be green.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Fourteen to nine, Mr. Harrison is still on the Budget Committee. Commissioner Jones?
I'd like to, I'd like to make an amendment to...
Take the vote that Commissioner Ring is asking for after replacing Commissioner Janong in place of Commissioner Hyde on budget.
Would you repeat that? I'm, the acoustics in here are not very good.
Sure. I would like to replace Commissioners, Commissioner Hyde with Commissioner Janong on budget.
Second.
All right. Motion seconded, so Hyde will be green, Janong will be red.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Fifteen to eight, Hyde stays on budget for now. When?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an amendment to our motion to cease all nominations, to amend that to allow one more nomination before we vote.
To allow one more nomination?
Just one more, yeah.
Second.
I'm going to accept that.
I'd like to amend that amendment.
There has to be an end to this somewhere.
I'd like to amend that amendment.
Pardon?
I'd like to amend that amendment. It's two amendments allowed to a motion. I'd like to amend that amendment.
What is your amendment?
I would like to amend that to five more nominations before we close.
For five more nominations?
Five more nominations.
All right.
That should give everybody a chance.
Commissioner Schof?
I would, once this was cleared, I want to make an amendment to this.
Commissioner Wright?
Some of you may have never heard this, but I heard it quite a bit. My wife tells me all the time, this makes my head hurt. It doesn't have to be this difficult, folks. It shouldn't be this difficult. Everybody talks about, we need to take care of our constituents' business. Folks, we're not doing that right now. We're bickering back and forth. There's no need in it. Y'all want to take care of business? Well, let's take care of business.
I would, um... I, I am about at the point now, the, the, uh... The attorney and I have talked, and it can come to a point to where the chairman sees the motions being dilatory and trying to evade the will of the body as a whole. And I'm, I'm almost at that point. I don't want to do that, but I'm almost at that point. And that is a legal, uh, legal thing to do. Commissioner Jones?
I'd just like to speak on that, and also respectfully to my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Wright, I love you to death, but I disagree. We are doing the people's business because we are passionately fighting for these committees. These committees were brought forth in a five-minute meeting with no input from, from public on any of it, and no heads up on any of it. So we're fighting for these committees. Several of us have put in, you know, three years' worth of passion on a project, and we're being disregarded as our first choices. It was said in the committee meeting that most were given their first or second choices. It was also said that a lot of people are going to be angry about all the assignments. So that was thought about, like, everybody needs to be angry, or, or the, the committee chairman didn't do her job. And I don't think that's the case. I think there's certain people that are more qualified for other committees than others, and we're fighting for those positions. This is not doing anything deliberately angry. We're passionately caring for our constituents, and we want those committees to have certain people on them. We, we at least want a voice for those committees, not to be thrown out in a paper where some committee members on committee on committees never even saw it. What is the committee on committees for if there is no committee in that process? The paper was brought forth and just laid on the table. That wasn't voted on. That's, I, I just, I just beg to differ, that we do care, and we are doing the people's business here, fighting for these positions.
Commissioner Schmidt?
I swear, I promise you, I swear I was not really going to talk tonight. But to be fair, and I've seen the, the names on these committees, I've disagreed with some of you. You've likewise with me. You've disagreed with me. We've agreed on stuff, vice versa, through all these committees. I've worked with almost, I think, all the commissioners here on several different committees. So I really don't think what we're seeing here tonight is necessarily bad. I mean, you've got qualified names here, men and women that are passionate about their constituents, that are going to bring their ideas and their opinions to these committees. So I don't see why we're playing this, if you want to call it game of, you know, we're going to replace this one with that one. You know, the citizens are watching this right now, and they're seeing that this is a bickering thing. And I can tell you, from what they're, what they're seeing right now is going to create doubt in their minds when the committees finally do meet. Because they're going to say, if they can't even agree to come together and solve issues, they're never going to do it on the committee level. So I just tell you, I mean, as much as people have put my name out there, you know, to pump up their name because it makes them feel good, I still think that those people that have done that still are capable of serving on committees. I just see this thing going all night, which is fine. I can stay up as late as we need to, but I don't think we're going to get anywhere. I do think we have names on those committees that are capable of making a decision for their constituents. And someone else said it before, if you don't like it, then bring it to the floor, and let's debate that issue when that comes. Thank you.
Commissioner Becker?
Just for clarification, I'm thinking, a couple of us are thinking that Commissioner Ring's was, was an amendment, and then Commissioner Wind was the amendment to the amendment. So we're thinking that the current amendment is actually out of order until we close one of the Commissioner Wind's amendment. Now, if, if Mr. Ring's was the absolute main motion, then, then we're okay. But that's not our understanding over here, so we just want to get clarification.
All right. Wait, I'm trying to get people that have not spoken as much. So we have an amendment for one more nomination? Yes. All right. Is there anyone to speak on Commissioner Jones's amendment in the queue?
Mr. Chairman, I believe, I believe that Commissioner Jones is, actually, it's out of order. I was wrong. I was going to say, I, I believe that the main motion, if I'm correct, is the slate, right?
Yes.
And then the second, the amendment, I mean, the first amendment, is Commissioner Ring's.
Yes.
And the second amendment, whether I like it or not, is Commissioner Wind's.
Yes.
No, we voted on the slate that passed. We voted on the process.
No, 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 I'm saying on the actual slate of the Budget Committee. I'm actually agreeing with you right now.
No, I, I know, I just think that's out of... I don't think we ever voted on anything. Everything else is voting on, got passed down, Mr. Commissioner from, whatever, point of view is.
I don't know that there was ever a main motion before Commissioner Ring's. It was just, I don't think there's, there's not a motion on the table other than Mr. Ring's. That's...
I think you may be right.
Well, if everyone that is in the queue, that'll be three people, Commissioner Teichner, Pomeroy, and Schof, if you would agree to not speak, we could go ahead and vote on that and maybe clear this.
Mr. Chairman, Catison?
You agree, Mr. Schof?
I agree, yes, sir.
Mr. Teichner? You agree?
My own. I have to say, I understand, at, at times it does, this feels petty. It does. But it only feels petty because we're right here in this moment. But if, just go back three years, we're, we're referring to three years ago all the time. There was a mandate. Only six commissioners stayed, and I think one was maybe unopposed. So only six commissioners even stayed on this twenty-four-person commission because they wanted change. And they wanted the will of the people. And what happened, sir, with all due respect, is they got the will of the people for a while, until some turned. There was, there was a little blood in the water, or whatever happened. And now they're getting the will of the commissioners. And it's a difference. And that's where the battle is. It's not petty. It feels petty, just because of the way it looks. But the true story is the fact that the people out there are counting on us to make sure their voice is heard. Their voice was silenced tonight, no matter how we look at it. And it's trying to be silenced every time. That's why there's so much angst. All we would have to do, I mean, you guys know, you got the votes, got them counted. It would be easy to just go back and somebody, go back and make, go back and, and change the, whoever the maker of the motion was, if there even was one. I don't even know there was one. Go back and just make it where we can vote on them individually. We know that the conservatives are going to lose. It's obvious. And that's okay. But the truth is, the will of the people should still be seen out as long as it can possibly be seen out. You guys made the, the adjustments that have taken place tonight, and I don't hate you for it. I'm just saying, I believe that, I'm old-fashioned enough to believe the will of the people should be done as long as we can do it. So I had to fight for them. I had to, because I was the underdog. I wasn't even on the ticket in the first place. And here we still can't get people to be nominated to be on the slate. So there you go.
Thank you for your comments, but I, I, I consider myself a conservative. I also don't question the sincerity or, or the people, any commissioner in this body trying to do the will of the people in their district. So, you know, I just needed to say that. Commissioner Pomeroy, did you have anything to say?
No, I was going to say something about the amendment, but what I just heard, goodness gracious. So, what I just heard was a, was an individual say that group thinking, group method, that individuals are not qualified to vote differently than other individuals on issues. That we all were here, by the way, I do appreciate the reference to natural term limits called elections, that apparently my previous commissioner agrees with, that when the people speak, they vote in elections. But I just heard someone say, out of due respect, that I, I believe that the budget the last three years has passed unanimously, with the exception of maybe the leader, if there were sides, or other sides of the conservative people. No tax increases, tax decreases, committees voting on, all, 100% passed. I believe, I believe if I remember correctly, the terrible Comer Barn idea, passed unanimously. So, here we are with people grandstanding about who's more conservative, who's more cr, and if I truly believe that every one of the 23 here could have a different opinion than me on a different issue, and that every issue, you don't have to vote the same way as somebody on that side. That's shocking, that I would stand up and say, the people... We, oh, by the way, let's just be honest. I know we love to feel really important. Th- there's not a lot of people watching this right now. We got some regulars that like to make sure they get all five minutes, and we got a lot going on, and I promise you, I bet you dollars to these doughnuts, this is what I left on my table here, if you walk down the street tomorrow, maybe one out of 50, even though we met in this county. So, you can go stand on the corner of Weston Place Drive and honk. No, I listen to someone and say, I stood there and fought over who was on committees for you. That's me serving my people, and I bet the people on Weston Place Drive don't even know you're here tonight. What, 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 what are we doing? Everybody can vote individually. We're not masses. We're not cliques. We're not people that, I mean, I've sat here and voted for tax increases. I've voted against them. I've fought for school budgets. I've voted against them. I voted on every issue. I've voted on the spend money for the Brown Park every single time it's come up. But this whole idea that voted against every development in the county, I, I, I don't understand what is going on. That is the most ignorant comments I've ever heard from this floor, that the same people have to vote the exact same way every time, and if you change your mind on an issue, you didn't do for the people. I love it when somebody says you were elected to do the people's job. Were, so were you not elected to do the ones who think the other way? Or are you so arrogant that you think on every issue, every person in this county agrees? That, that might be the silliest thing I've ever heard before in my life. I've listened to you be out of order all night. Um, so, again, all I'm asking, yes, those are everybody.
Listen.
Again, I'm, what do we have to do to get...
What's your point?
He's referred to fellow commissioners as ignorant and arrogant.
Mm-hmm.
He said the statements, the comments were...
Sure did.
All right, proceed.
Correct.
Commissioner, try to wrap this up.
I'm wrapping up. Uh, no, I said that those are the most ignorant comments, because I really don't believe that people are up here, that 14 people come and vote. But what do we have to do to get you to take over so we can have a business meeting of these people that we talk about? How much more insanity until you just say, I'm not listening to this anymore. This is what we're voting on. Vote yes or no, because that's where we're at. I know you've mentioned that.
I, I'm about at that point.
Because that's the fifth time I've heard someone that out, do the same, it's every week, but it, I mean, let's just move forward.
Okay. I'm all in the point of order. I, I think everything right now has gotten down to just dilatory kinds of, uh, statements and, uh, an attempt to vote against the will of the commission, and I'm going to call for a vote. Uh, I'm asking the chairman to put the, uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner, uh... Say who made the original motion.
I made the original motion.
For... Uh, for the slate, for, for the slate. And that, that motion was made and seconded by Commissioner Bergdorf, and who seconded that? All right. I am going to ask now for the clerk to place that on the board, and you will either vote for these people. If you don't like it, vote no.
That's no longer the motion on board. It's been amended twice. We have to vote on the amendments.
Not accord, if, if the ruling is made, it's a dilatory kind of...
Those motions, well, I don't agree whether you want to entertain them or not. I mean, they're, they're motions to amend his, so you can take them up, vote them down.
All right, this is what we're going to do. We're going to end this. I'm not putting up with this, uh, any longer. I'm not going to be here anyway, so I don't care, uh, if I hurt anybody's feelings, but the people of Sumner County need better than this. Uh, this is what we're going to do. We're going to vote on the five more nominations, the one more nomination, and then we're going to vote on this slate. So, there's no sense in your name getting in the queue here at all. Okay? So, put five, uh, this is Commissioner Jones, five more nominations.
Each commissioner records your vote.
That is defeated 13 to 10. Now, one nomination.
Each commissioner records your vote. Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, there'll be one more nomination that I will entertain before we vote on this slate.
Oh, no, y'all are going to love this. I'm having fun tonight, and I, I'm, y'all are going to love this amendment. It's not a nomination, it's an amendment. And, um, no, hold on, you're going to love it. I, doesn't matter what we say, it doesn't matter what we do. I would note, Mr. Chairman, that I've been here till, like, 1:00 in the morning talking on budget stuff, and I've heard, like, I mean, back and forth. So, I mean, it's not even that, it's not even 9:40. So, like, I, I, while I actually agree with the sentiment here, I absolutely agree with the sentiment, we have very much allowed other folks to derail our conversations many times, and we're not wanting to do it tonight. I don't ever want to do it, but if we're going to, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. However, so I'll say that to, to note that we've absolutely let people rattle on. I mean, we rattled on for hours on the last Budget Committee until I was just about lost my mind. Um, so this will be an early night, and I'm going to help make it early. So, my amendment is this. Because I know nothing we do matters, these are already set, I know, I, I vote, or I, I amend, make an amendment that, uh, we approve all these. That's my amendment.
Motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Klein?
Well, okay, I'm going to make an amendment. We just cleared two of them. Okay. I am going to make an amendment and try to appeal to all the commissioners, uh, and this is no, no personal tax on anybody, but I, I counted who, how many people are on how many committees, and, uh, the chair of, of Committee on Committees is got, is on the highest number of committees, and there are several people who are only on one committee. So, I would make an appeal to you in fairness and spreading out the work that, uh, we replace Commissioner Bergdorf with Commissioner Brown.
This, this is the one additional nomination. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Brown for Commissioner Bergdorf. Commissioner Bergdorf will be green. Commissioner Brown will be red.
Each commissioner records your vote.
14 to 9.
That's right.
All right, uh... Commissioner Schoeff, uh, made a motion to, uh, accept the whole slate, everything. All right, that's what we're going to vote on now, and, uh, we will, uh, Commissioner Janung?
Yes.
You need to wait and be recognized.
Are you ready?
Go ahead.
So, when Mr. Schoeff brought this forward just now, we have a problem. And the problem is, is that, um, two, maybe three years ago, I filed an ethics complaint on one of the commissioners. And I would, I'm going to read Todd Alexander's response to my complaint. And the Ethics and Co, the Ethics and Con, Conduct Committee found the complaint incredible based on Section 5, Sec. 4, and 5 of the Code of Ethics and Conduct Resolution. Per the resolution, the matter was referred to the county law director for a legal opinion and/or recommendation for action. The county law director stated that a public apology and public withdrawal of the objectional statements and remarks as a whole may sufficiently resolve the violation. The committee approved the opinion and the recommendation of the county law director. Additionally, the committee determined that if the recommended apology and withdrawal of the statement were refused, per the resolution, the committee recommended remove a board committee assignments until such member is restored to good standing or permanently replaced, per the commission rules. For a commissioner to be removed from a committee, the full commission must approve the recommendation. I have copied Chairman Hyde on this email for this information. This is Todd Alexander. Now, I will tell you that this was a, um, the reason I filed it was because the comments made in this commission body was to a group of men who, um, were accused of being criminals, tax evaders, and other things. And one of those gentlemen were my husband, and it was a direct personal attack to my family. And that's why I filed it. I didn't file a defamation lawsuit because I waited for an apology, and I, my husband never got an apology. That's cowardness to me. And if you're going to, if we're going to vote for all these people and this person's on here, that means we are approving bad behavior and the decision-making of attack, this person attacking innocent people, innocent people in this body. Throw them all in a bucket. And no apology for the last, almost three years, three years has ever been done. What does that say about us if we vote for this? I am protesting this, and I'm saying that I don't agree with that person being on the committees because I think it's wrong, and this was what was ruled. Now, you can all agree with me, I wasn't going to do this, but I've been so mad about this, and it was a direct, a direct personal attack. It hurt, because I would never do this to anybody in this commission body. I would never speak about anybody like that. I would never attack anybody in here like that. Even if you were a tax evader and you were, you never paid your pa, taxes like Al Sharpton, I wouldn't care, because it's none of my damn business. But let me tell you something. This went to the core. And if we're going to approve this person on these committee, I'm not saying the name like you asked, but if we're going to approve this person on this committee, then what does that say about us? That's why I brought it up at this time, because he wants to approve the whole slate, all for, all for nothing, just like we always do, but these, these past few months, all or nothing. So, that's what I have to say about it. And if you have, if this person has any credibility, I would suggest they write a letter to every one of those men and apologize.
All right, we have three people, and they're the only three that I'm going to hear before we take a vote. Commissioner Jones?
I would like to amend, um, Commissioner Schoeff's, um, amendment, since we haven't had the opportunity to replace any names on any other committees. That was specifically for a budget vote, was my understanding, um, the original motion. So, I want to amend his to say we approve these with the exception of a replacement on general operations of three names. Um...
What's your point?
I believe we're out of order. We're called...
We're only on the slate of the Budget Committee for approval, and then...
No, he amended it.
No, we're, we're on approving everything.
He amended it to the whole.
So, when he amended that, now we can take up the whole, the whole slate?
So, now, since, since we're talking about all of them, I've got three names that I'd like to put forward on general operations. Can I give all three of those names? Or do I need to do them one at a time?
Uh, give them one at a time.
We'll vote on them one at a time?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I want to give reasons for this, too. The general operations work has several things in motion right now that we would like to see through. A lot of work's been done on that committee, and, um, I would like to see it continue as much in whole as, as it is right now as possible. So, I'd like to put forward, um, Commissioner Klein in place of Commissioner Harris.
Uh, Commissioner Harris will be green. Commissioner Klein will be red.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Uh, that, that motion fails because neither got a majority. All right, next.
The second name I'd like to put forward, um, is Commissioner Miller, and this is choosing to replace two people who this was not even their first or second committee choice. They didn't even care that much to be on this committee, and I know Commissioner Miller's very passionate about it. She's helped a lot of people out in Cotton Town, and I would like to replace, uh, Commissioner Schmidt with Commissioner Miller, so she can continue to do, do the good work for the people out there.
Commissioner, Commissioner Schmidt will be green. Commissioner Miller, red.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Neither receive a majority, so that fails.
The, the third name I'd like to put forward is, um, Commissioner Holmes. She's kind of like our Shannon Bream here, uh, hard to hate, Commissioner Holmes, and she's done good work for the people, too, on the General Operations Committee. I would like to swap her for somebody who did not care enough to put it as their first or second choice, and that would also be, um, Commissioner Schmidt.
Uh, so, Commissioner Holmes will be red, and that was, she was to replace who?
Commissioner Schmidt.
Schmidt, all right, will be green.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, uh, Commissioner Schmidt receives, uh, 13 votes.
I guess she is our date, okay?
All right, uh, there was one other person, Commissioner Mansfield.
Uh, I would like, um, I'm going to amend, um, Commissioner Schoeff's amendment. Uh, I'm putting forward two names for, uh, Gen Ops. Take one at a time is fine. I guess first, I would like to nominate Commissioner David Klein to, uh, replace Commissioner Mansfield on General Operations Committee.
All right, Commissioner Klein to replace Commissioner Mansfield on General Operations. Uh, Mansfield will be red. Uh, Mansfield will be red, Klein will be green.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
We need to make that note in, on your papers, that was seventeen votes for Commissioner, eighteen votes for Commissioner Klein. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I am going to, I would like to nominate Commissioner Holmes to replace Commissioner Rogers on that committee.
Commissioner who?
Commissioner Rogers. I know Commissioner Rogers and Schmidt, it was their third choice. Commissioner Holmes, it was her first choice. Uh, and it was said, everybody got their first and second choice, and that's not true of Commissioner Holmes. Uh, and I would like to see her on that in place of Commissioner Rogers.
All right, Commissioner Rogers will be green, Commissioner Holmes, red.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Uh, Commissioner Rogers receives thirteen votes. All right, we are going to vote on this now, on the slate, now let's the clerk to put it on the board. The full, everything. Yes. All right, let's go ahead. Yes. We're gonna vote.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, that amendment passes. For all of the committees with the few amendments that we made, now we will go back to, that was your amendment to nomination ceasing and then main motion. Yes.
I've heard several comments that were made today about, about this slate and other, various other issues with regards to committees. I would just like to point out that three years ago, I was a member of three different committees and chairman of legislative. When the slate came out for that following, that following month, or that, for the new commission, I was on the beer board, period. Okay? I'm sorry, but this is the process. The committee on committees selects the committees, and we vote on them one way or the other. Don't everybody get their feelings hurt? This is the way it happens. Okay? Four years ago, I didn't get my feelings hurt, because I knew what the outcome of the election when it meant. I was gonna be on the beer board, and I've served the last two years cheerfully as chairman of the beer board. However, and I'm, because I'll still be on the beer board, which was neither here nor there for me, but for two years, I did not get any of my choices. I had a tactic back, I put beer board as third, so I did get my third choice. So this happens, if your feelings are hurt, I'm sorry, but we need to move on. This is, it's ridiculous, we've spent this much time arguing over a few members on a few committees, when we've got what much more important things to deal with in this commission. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, it's all been ratified account, according to the county attorney, the one committee budget is a moot issue now. All right, now, I am going to call for a ten-minute recess, and I'd like to ask that the Budget Committee, Commissioner Becker. All right, all right, let's vote on that, we'll put that on the board.
You, you had asked everybody that had been nominated if they accepted the nomination, is that a requirement for this vote, that they accept the nomination?
I don't understand what you're saying.
I've heard you asked several times if people accepted the nomination. We have members on these boards that aren't even here tonight, that have not accepted the nomination. Do we need to replace them?
No.
Or is it in order to go ahead and put them on?
They can turn in their resignation later, which people do all the time that I've been up here, and the committee on committees will select someone else, just like I said with Mr. Becker. All right, we'll put on the board, just to confirm Commissioner Becker's motion. I mean, Mr. Ring, I'm sorry.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
And that passes fifteen to eight. Now, at this time, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, and then we're going to have some short committee meetings. Hey, do you have the changes that were made?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, what we're going to do now, and we want to go through this as quickly and as efficiently as possible, is just merely elect a chairman and a vice chairman of the committees. You will please come to this microphone here, which will be turned on. And please email the attorney's office to let him know who you are. And, and you will also report to the clerk who, who is elected, okay? Yeah, I, I'm gonna do it this way, this time. This is the way I'd done it for thirty years before, so I don't know what happened the last two years, I don't really remember, but this is what I want to do. Okay, Budget Committee, come up to the microphone here, please. Those of you who were elected to Budget. And so everybody can see and hear, and elect you a chairman and a vice chairman to, to this microphone here. Yes.
I nominate Schof to be chairman.
Aye.
All right, so everyone, if you did not hear, the chairperson is Schof. And vice chairperson is Boyd. Education, please come forward.
I nominate Dr. T. Schirr.
I nominate Danny Sullivan.
I nominate Danny.
All in favor? Nomination for vice chair, nominate Becker, ring. Any other nominations?
Nominate Jeremy Mansfield.
I decline the nomination.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any folks?
All right, General Ops, please come forward.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner David Klein for a period of six months to finish some of the projects we have in the pipe, and then we reelect the chairman after six months. Anybody second that?
I'll nominate Ben Harris.
All right, there are two nominations then, so I guess I'll have to step in till you do get a chairman. Would you raise your hand if you are, choose, who did you say you nominated?
Commissioner Klein.
Okay, Mr. Klein? Mr. Harris? Okay, Mr. Harris is chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Klein for vice chair, since he's had the most experience in this committee and knows all the things that are going on right now.
Okay, we have a chairman now, so he can, you can go ahead and take the vote.
All in favor of Mr. Klein as vice chair, raise your hand. All of those, Mr. Schmidt, raise your hand.
I'd like to nominate Mary Janong for vice chair.
I second, oh, do, do we second?
No, you don't have to.
I'll nominate Mr. Wes Wynn for vice chair. All in favor of Mr. Klein as vice chair, raise your hand. I mean, Mr. Janong, I'm sorry. Raise, raise your hand. All in favor of Wes Wynn, raise your hand.
Okay, Mr. Wynn. Okay, beer board?
I'd like to nominate Chrissy Miller. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vice chairman, I'll nominate James.
I decline that nomination.
I would be on it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we got the most important committee out of the way there, the beer board. Health and Emergency Services, please come forward.
You're on that one.
Oh, I'm on that one.
I'll nominate Commissioner Rogers as chairman.
Second.
I'll nominate Mr. Hyde.
Uh, I decline. I want the beer board, that's too late. Uh, okay, all in favor? Wait a minute, did we vote? All for Mr. Rogers, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, you take over.
All right, so nominations for vice chair?
All right, so nominations for vice chair. I'll nominate Mr. Wright. Say aye. Anybody else? There you have it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nominations for a chair?
I'd like to motion nominate Mr. Harrison.
Harrison, any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any votes? Chair?
Nomination for vice chair.
Yes, he is, he was elected. He can turn any in later.
I nominate Commissioner Holmes.
Second. Any votes?
Who is the vice chair of that? Oh, Holmes, okay. Financial Management will need to, see, do we have everyone except? If you are unanimous, you could go ahead and elect someone if you'd like, Financial Management. Who are the four? Who is none?
Financial Management.
Oh, oh, yes, okay. And Ethics is already, okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
So Financial Management, you can, your first meeting, or you could even call one if you wanted to, and elect your, your people.
We're making it up as we get.
Pardon?
We voted not to.
Not to elect a chairman?
We voted not to do it. We voted not to.
Financial Management, come up to the stand here and elect a chairperson.
Hi, guys. So we canceled Financial Management, we'll have it next week.
Okay.
Two wants to be chair.
Okay.
I'll nominate Terry Boyd, she's done a good job so far.
Check.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And vice chair? I'll nominate Bob Brown.
I nominate Shanny Bergdorf.
I decline.
I nominate Ty Kerr, he's not here to decline.
Second.
Yep, oh, all in favor? Aye.
Oh, Ethics? You want to call Ethics?
Uh, yes, Ethics.
I nominate Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
I nominate Commissioner Wright.
Do you want it?
Sure. Somebody's got to have a vote called.
Why am I in charge of this?
All in favor of Commissioner Rogers, say aye.
Aye.
That's it.
So take the entertainment for a motion for vice chair.
I nominate Commissioner Rogers.
Commissioner Wright, anybody second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
There you have it.
Legislative Committee. Please come forward if you are chairperson.
Budget, Education, General Ops. Health and Education, any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Was that Harrison and Rogers? Was that Harrison and Rogers? Okay. Okay, a report from the Legislative Committee.
Resolution 2508-10 is to approve the course and master services agreement, I so move.
All right, motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to group and approve.
Second.
All right, motion to group and approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Some of these have different vote requirements.
Like what?
The private act is one. So three, four, and...
We better go, he says they require different voting on each one, so we need to go one by one.
Item 25...
Go ahead.
Item 2508-11 is to request the private act to establish term limits for county commissioners, and I so move.
Okay, all right, let's put that on the board. Any discussion on that, Commissioner Harris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer an amendment.
All right.
That once this sent to the legislature, it comes back and be placed on a referendum. And I believe if you check with the county law office, he'll tell you the same thing.
A county referendum?
Second, I'm good with that.
County referendum, okay.
Yes, sir.
A motion and a second, is there any objection to that?
Is there permissible to do that?
Be placed on a referendum?
Is it permissible to do that? We were told we couldn't do other things on referendum, so is it constitutionally permissible for us to do that?
If we included the private act, that'll be part of the act, so yes, they approved it.
I will, I'm going to make an amendment to that amendment that... It's Section 4 of the now therefore be resolved, where it says this private act, once enacted by the General Assembly, shall become effective upon approval by two-thirds vote of the Sumter County Commission, according to Tennessee law. I want to say effective upon approval by two-thirds vote of the Sumter County Commission or referendum of Sumter County voters.
Second.
In accordance with Tennessee law.
All right, that is an amendment, we'll put that on the board if no one wants to speak to it, if you'll place that on the board, Mr. Mansfield's amendment, that it be either...
A two-thirds vote at the County Commission or a referendum.
Or a referendum, okay.
Either or.
All right.
I have a standing, I make that name.
Not now, we've got two, so, all right.
I guess we need a revote, because that...
It passes five to three.
Yeah.
No.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, that amendment does pass, and since it passes, I'll ask for Mr. Mansfield to repeat that, so that you all know exactly what it was.
It was basically language to say, and I've actually thought about this previously, and I just wasn't sure, I actually had this in my original resolution before I brought it for legislative, and I took it out, because I wasn't sure if we could do it or not, because of things the law director said, so I can provide, but it basically shall become effective upon approval by two-thirds vote of the Sumter County Commission or a referendum of Sumter County voter.
All right, the attorney wishes to speak, and I'm going to recognize him.
So, the referendum portion of this, I think, is an overabundance of caution, which I agree with, but it still has to have the two-thirds final approval by the commission, when it's all said and done for it to be enacted here, so I just want to be very clear...
Correct, it's got to have sixteen votes to pass this, the main motion.
Yes. We just pass it. It's still got to move through for its final two-thirds vote.
Correct, it's got to pass your two-thirds vote, it's got to pass the Legislative Assembly, and it's got to pass two-thirds of voter again.
All right, so now, do we have any other amendments? Commissioner Sullivan?
No, honestly, I don't know. I guess if it doesn't pass, oh, it's me?
Hello.
Oh, I don't know, I didn't realize this up.
I would like to make an amendment on item number two on the resolution, notwithstanding the term limits established here, and any individual serving as a duly-elected Sumter County Commissioner, at the time of the private act is approved, may be eligible to seek election for an additional four-year term, regardless of the number of terms they have previously served. This exception shall apply only to those holding office at the time of passage, and shall not extend to any further office holders. I heard it said earlier, what's good for the goose, Commissioner Schoeff said, is good for the gander. I think last year, or last term, there were eight of us that have served at least one term, off a term, and then back on, or we have served two or more consecutive terms, and I am all for term limits. I wish we had them in Congress, we could probably get something done and have a great country. But here locally, where we're affected the most, if you have had two terms, whether consecutively or on four years, all four years back on, I think it should apply, and I will vote for term limits if this amendment passes, but I believe that, hey, if you've served two terms, and you're finishing up in this next year, you should be done.
Second.
All right, that's a motion and a second, anyone want to speak to that? Commissioner Wynn?
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Sullivan beat me to this one, this is exactly my thoughts on this as well. It does seem the way this is written, essentially, it's like the rules for thee, but not for me, type mentality, and so I think if we truly support term limits, then we need to truly support term limits, and if you're to and done, then you're to and done, so I think that this needs to be completely struck in from this document.
I'll get the cue on that one, too, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Miller?
When this came to committee, this is exactly what we wanted, and it would not have passed, it would have not had the votes, if that language had not been added in there, so the original, I guess, resolution, whatever this is, was for two terms, period, end of story, but there were several on that committee that did not agree with that, would not vote unless we limited that, and it was not Commissioner Mansfield.
And I will add, when I first wrote this, my original intent was only to be two terms, but to be honest with you, I didn't think people in this commission would vote for that, so I put a transitionary clause in there, which is very common for legislative bodies, but I fully support Commissioner Sullivan's amendment, and will wholeheartedly vote for it.
Commissioner Ring, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Sullivan's amendment is not feasible. People will be taking out papers to run for office in December. The primary is in April. If the state legislature votes on this in March, or excuse me, the primary will be in May, I guess, but if the state votes on, legislature votes on this in March or April, you're going to have candidates who may be thrown off the ballot. That's not fair to anybody.
They wouldn't, they'd already be on the ballot, grandfathered in, so it's really a moot point.
Wait, wait, wait just a minute, he's got the floor, and then I'll let you tell.
Excuse me, is there somewhere in here on the ballot that says if they're on the ballot, it's grandfathered in? I don't see that.
Please, please talk to me, okay.
I didn't see anything in here that says if you're on the ballot, it's grandfathered in, so unless, you know, that's, if somebody's running for office, and they get the nomination of their party, or they get fifty people to sign, or twenty-five people, thirty, whatever, to sign their petition, it's unfair to immediately say, I'm sorry, you can't run for office, because we passed a law. So I don't think that's possible to have that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Mansfield.
I'll just say, because I actually asked this question to the law director, because I originally wrote it that way, so it'll be two terms, and he cautioned me, it doesn't make a difference what we do here, if somebody pulls paper to run for office in the spring primary of 2026, they're already ahead of this being happening from state law, so therefore it would not affect them, they're still on the ballot, they still elected, and they would get that extra term, regardless of whether we put this language in there or not, whether we strike it, so that's the reason I added the transitionary clause, another reason was because there were questions and confusion from what my observation was in the city of Hendersonville, and even Gallatin, on what happens to people caught in the middle of the cycle, and so I heard some of that feedback when I was just asking the questions of residents, that's the only reason I put the transitionary clause in there. So I'm full of support, Commissioner Sullivan's amendment to this, a hundred percent, because that's how I originally wrote the resolution, but I was basically cautioned several things of not clarifying, people caught in the middle, and if somebody does pull papers, but the law director did instruct me that, because I asked the same question, if this doesn't have it in there, and we pass this, and the General Assembly passes it, and we come back and pass it again, that's not going to happen until May the earliest, the election's over May 1st, so, but the point is, I mean, it's...
Wait, wait just a minute, wait just a minute.
The primary election is, and so basically, it's almost like you can't pass a law, and then retroactively go and punish people after you pass a law, the same thing applies here, and so, I mean, the law director can speak to this, but I'm going to vote for this amendment, because I think it's a great amendment, because I originally wrote it this way, so, but I understand the sentiment, and I understand the caution, there are commissioners here who have been commissioners more than eight years, who have already pulled papers, but my understanding of the law is that this would not prevent them or preclude them from still running again, if we pass this amendment or not, but I'll let the law director chime in on that. That's my understanding.
All right, and we all have different opinions on this, as to whether it even will muster, but anyway, who, Commissioner Harrison, did you want to speak to this?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
I think what I just heard about, if they're able to, if we're able to pull papers and be on the ballot, and then this gets approved, if that's already in flight, and it doesn't count, then I, the way I'm reading this, we would then get yet another one beyond that, so even if that's our second one, the way this is, that would be our, we would allow us to get even a third one beyond that, without the amendment, is that...
I mean, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm asking that.
No, go ahead.
Am I reading that correct? I just want, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what exactly the implications are for the amendment.
All right, Commissioner Schmidt?
This is more of a comment, I've returned, I don't know how many emails I've gotten, I didn't count, I've talked to people in person about this resolution, I will not be voting for any amendments. The resolution that is here for term limits, which I've discussed with citizens, I will be voting in favor of term limits, as it's written in this resolution, but I think we're muddying the waters with this, there, I think it's fair, if you're here for two terms, if you, I think it's fair that you serve a third term, I have no problem with any of that, I'm just not going to vote in favor of any of the amendments, because I feel like we're starting to muddy this thing around, but I will be voting for the original term limits resolution that the Legislative Committee passed, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear the law director's opinion on what the maker of the motion stated, to help know how to vote, but regardless, I do want to hear that, but regardless, if we pass something here tonight, that the state tells us we can't do, then it doesn't matter, but the point is, the attempt of trying to do something that constituents want, we've got a hundred emails saying that the citizens want this, they want restrictions, they want term limits, I'm going to vote the way the constituents want, and then it'll just be changed if it doesn't pass what the state's saying, so there's no fear there for me, I'm going to go ahead and make my vote for the term limits.
Can we have the maker of the amendment restate his amendment?
I do want to hear the law director's weigh in on that, too. I do wanna hear the Law Director's weigh in on that, too.
Commissioner Sullivan, would you do that for us, please, and then I'll have the Law Director to...
So, my amendment was to strike number two and in place of that, and this is whether or not you're, if your four-term limit's great, if you're not, that's fine, too. But I think if we've served two terms, that's enough. So, my amendment is, is that if you're a current county commissioner, you have served two terms, either consecutively or two four-year terms over a period of years, you are not eligible to run for a third term. And again, I respect the way any of you vote. I just think if we're gonna do term limits, it needs to be good for both.
Mr. Attorney, would you like to speak to Commissioner Jones's statement?
What was the question? Whether or not Commissioner Mansfield's interpretation of the law is correct in the fact that it will grandfather in anybody that's already run. But regardless, I think we could clean that up with an amendment to Commissioner Sullivan's, or if he would just change the motion, to say that everything he said and then add to it after the state approves it. That way, the timeline doesn't matter. After the state approves it, the following election, after the state approves it. I mean, that would clean everything up. Would you be okay with cleaning, with that and would that suffice to the Law Director? Or is it even necessary?
I don't think the attorney understands what you're saying.
Commissioner Ring is worried that people will get caught in the cycle and be kicked off the ballot. And Commissioner Mansfield had said that they would already be on the ballot, they would already passed the primary and been the candidate for the party, and therefore they would go on through, that the state's not going to pull them off of the ballot after they've won the primary, that that just wouldn't happen. Everything's gonna be activated after the election cycle's finished. Any law that's passed in the middle of an election that affects elections doesn't affect the current election. He's asking that question, and I wanna know if it's true or not. But if so, we can clean that up by amending Commissioner Sullivan's motion to just add the words "after state approval" or "after the next election after state approval." It's an easy way to fix this. So, is what Commissioner Mansfield's saying true, that they will not be affected?
They should not be affected for two reasons. One, it's not a problem now. It's not been passed, so there's nothing to prohibit them from doing anything. The second is, if the referendum addendum is in there, which I believe we voted on that, it still would have to show up on a ballot to be voted on, which would take one ballot cycle out of the equation before it's even passed, which means that regardless of what your position was on whether this law could be retroactive, which I don't believe it can, the mere mechanics of moving this through to final passage will get you past this election cycle anyway.
Because the referendum will have to take place.
That wasn't the amendment we voted on. And the language was, this private act, once enacted, shall take effect only upon approval by either a two-thirds vote of the Sumner County Commission or by a majority vote.
No, this has, this has to be approved by the commission with the two-thirds vote. The referendum is in on top of. It was a, it's a, huh? Yeah. Yeah. So, we're talking about two votes, getting it out of here and then coming back and vote it on again.
So, the way I stated that was not a "and both," it was an "or." It was the two-thirds vote of the Sumner County Commission or a referendum, which both are permissible.
No.
That's what we voted on. That's how I stated the motion.
That's what I voted on.
Well, that's why I was trying to explain, it still has to come back for the two-thirds vote, even if it's referendum.
Okay, just clarifying. Yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
As long as we're in agreement on that, yes.
Okay.
Does everyone understand what he's saying? I wanna make sure you clear this. He's saying, what the attorney is saying is that it's gotta come back to this body after it passes a legislature. That doesn't mean it's approved until there's a two-thirds approval of the county commission, isn't that right? Regardless of the referendum.
Correct.
So, that will give us past the election cycle and keep that period from that. Is that correct?
That's my belief, yes.
All right, Commissioner Becker?
Yes, I guess I got a couple of things. I don't know, going back to the amendment that we passed, there was "or" language in there, so I'm not sure what that "or" language means now. But I also wanna say, you know, I was, I did, I was out of town this last legislative committee meeting. So, maybe it was discussed, but the Legislative Committee meeting prior that I was in attendance, and we reviewed and voted on this, there was a comment earlier about this wasn't in there, but we added it during the meet. I don't remember that at all. Like, I don't remember any conversation about that. So, maybe that was, like, talked about before that meeting, outside of, outside of the committee when the resolution was being put together. What I do recall, and what I'm gonna bring up now, is that my strong preference is to somehow get us as a commission to a point where there's twenty-four of us that we're, that it's, you know, twelve of us or twelve spots are on a ballot, and then two years later, the other twelve, so we're staggered versus all twenty-four. And so, when we're getting to a point right now where we're talking about term limits, we would end up, potentially the county would end up in a situation where all twenty-four of us are termed out, or whatever the language is, and there would be a completely twenty, twenty-four brand-new ones. And I personally do not think that is healthy for the county. So, I want to understand what our options are in order to stagger. I'm all about term limits. So, don't get me wrong here, say I'm against term limits, because that's not the case. What I want to do is protect the fact that in order to stagger, I wanna know what we can do to stagger the terms versus potentially all of us getting termed out at the exact same moment.
That's not gonna happen.
So, I'll ask that to the county, to the chairman, but I would like, I would like to understand that from the county Law Director.
I think, Mr. Becker, I had heard the Law Director say before that that was not possible to do that way, but I'll let him speak to that and maybe I misunderstood what he had said.
That's the one area that falls smack into the Constitution, which says it's four-year terms, so we can't do abbreviated terms. I don't even think we could do greater terms to create this staggered effect. The only way I see a staggered effect ever coming into play would be the addition of commissioners at staggered times. But I think twenty-four commissioners is more than enough. So, the next question would be, is if they were, if you phased down to a smaller size, could it be done then? I don't know the answer to that question, other than the Constitution is very clear that it will be four-year terms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having watched the earlier debate, I can't imagine why anybody wanted to stay past tonight. But I will caution you that with the state party having already limited the population of individuals who can actually qualify to run, you have to be on the Republican ballot, you have to be three out of four state primaries. So statistically, that eliminates a large swath of the population. Secondly, when you start further decreasing the population by saying, okay, you can't, if you've already served eight years, what, there's no language, to my knowledge, in this resolution that addresses what if you have districts that nobody qualifies to run. So, that creates an issue. And in the, I heard it referenced earlier tonight about the political climate in which we're in, where you get lambasted on Facebook for a vote, that somebody didn't like, it's further gonna eliminate the number of people who are gonna want to run. So, you got to be very careful here. In addition to that, the people, we hear the people referenced all the time, the people, the citizens, you are taking away their right to vote for who they want to vote for. Where would this commission have been if we hadn't had the steady guiding hand of Mr. Hyde? You are eliminating any possibility for institutional knowledge like that going forward. That will never happen again if you implement term limits. Our terms end August 31st, 2026. That is a term limit. It's called an election. And we just saw in 2022, that also has been referenced tonight. The voters are pretty smart. They can figure out who they wanna vote for. If they wanna vote somebody out, they have that opportunity to do so. They do it every two years in Congress, four hundred and thirty-five of them, ninety-nine at the State House. So, you better be very careful going down this road. I'm not even sure that this is even gonna be allowed by the state. So, you, I would caution my fellow commissioners to be very careful on this vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Teichner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good points been made tonight, and I don't wanna belabor the point any longer than we have to, but just a few things. I mean, I mean, just, I'm thankful that I was taken off the ballot. I know that sounds really crazy, but I really am, because I got to learn a lot of things from the people that I got to speak with. And I got to knock on a lot of doors. But it shows you that, that even though, I really believe that's unconstitutional to not allow somebody to be on the ballot the first time. But whatever, I mean, it's okay, because I think it was one of the best things I ever got to go through. And so, that being said, that's not a limiting factor of, you know, I'm a proud Republican, even though that I, that's why I didn't run as an independent or Democrat. Nothing against either party, but I just, I'm proud to be a Republican. But the truth is, is when you go and run, there's a lot of people that wanna run. There's a lot of people that won't say they wanna run. But regardless, if, I just wanna clarify, because we're getting way off in the weeds again, and I've done it myself. But I could ask the sheriff right now, and I don't think I have to, if I were driving down Upper Station Camp at forty-five miles an hour tonight, and it was a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, all's good. Well, would I get, if it were changed tomorrow to a thirty mile an hour speed limit, I would not get a ticket for going forty-five yesterday. It's just not gonna happen. So, we don't have to worry about any of that. This is just stuff, I get it. It's a wonderful abundance of caution, but I think that the amendment is a strong amendment, and we need to just vote on it. It's a, it's a good one, and everybody that I've ever spoken to wants it, except for one email I got, one. And I almost feel like that that was maybe misread or something, because everybody wants term limits at all levels, all places. And so, I just, I do appreciate the diligence on this. I'm not sick of talking about it or anything like that, and I think everybody's point is valid. But I do believe that the most important point is the fact that everybody that's not elected wants term limits. Everybody wants that. So, there we go.
I'm ready, Mr. Chairman. Just, I feel like some commissioners are conflating and confusing closing primaries and party registration with being elected. Tennessee State Constitution guarantees anybody can, who's of age, can run for office independent of party. That's independent, throw the party system away. People can run for office, end of story. So, I don't wanna, this is not about party registration. Now, there is something coming through Legislative next month about party registration that passed, Commissioner Teichner brought forward, and to encourage the State Legislature to do that. But this is about term limits. Eighty-two percent of American voters want term limits. Nine out of ten Hendersonville voters voted it by referendum for term limits. Eight out of ten Gallatin voters voted by referendum for term limits. There's nothing in our state constitution that precludes Sumner County from doing term limits without the General Assembly's help. Right now, I'll qualify that statement. Sumner County cannot do term limits. That is a fact. That is a true statement. The General Assembly, however, can enact term limits on Sumner County's behalf. And the way you do that is through a private act. That's why we're doing this, because we, as a general law county, can't do it ourselves. We're not a charter county. That's true. So, as a general law county, we gotta go, hey, state representatives, we want to do this. You got two of the biggest cities and one of the biggest counties who voters overwhelmingly want this. So, you put it through a referendum, it's great. It's gonna pass eight out of ten voters. It's gonna be fantastic. Voters are gonna finally get what they want to, want on this. And you won't have politicians grappling for power to stay in power forever, backed up by political PACs and other kind of developer money to influence votes and elections. So, as far as a learning curve, you know, I think citizens see right through the claim, you know, that term limits would somehow hand too much power to inexperienced people or even staff, because right now, I mean, that's what we have. When you have, the longer people I've seen are in elected office at all levels, the more bureaucratic they become and the more distant they come, become from their voters. So, this is just another step. I do understand Commissioner Becker's, that he's concerned with the language from Commissioner Sullivan's, and I'm using names here, I apologize. So, maybe somebody won't file an ethics complaint on me. So, but with this, you know, the language, I know in section two, that I guess Commissioner Sullivan is asking to remove the entire thing, there was a sentence, "This exception shall only apply to those holding office at the time of passage and shall not extend to any future office holders." That was a part of the grandfathering in. But I don't know, you know, I hear the concern from Commissioner Ring, from Commissioner Becker. I'm all for it. I just don't want us to muddy the waters on this, because it seems pretty clear how the language is now. It's gone forth pretty clearly. Citizens understand it. So, if I could have Commissioner Sullivan restate his amendment one more time for us to be very clear about what, are you striking the entire paragraph, too, or are you rewording that paragraph?
Mr. Sullivan, would you do that, please?
I'm striking the whole number two and stating that any Sumner County, current Sumner County Commissioner who has served two years, whether consecutively or not, a two, four-year term, will not be eligible to run for a third year, a third term.
Could we say that upon passage of this by the General Assembly and by a majority of the Sumner County Commission or voter, a referendum of a majority of Sumner County voters?
I think that's fine, because obviously...
Just to clarify...
It's probably not gonna, it's probably not gonna affect this current commission on the next voting cycles. What I'm hearing...
Well, because anybody's pulled a paper. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. But I just wanted to clarify the language there, just so there's no confusion.
Okay. All right. Let's move on here. Commissioner Brown?
There will all be, always be people to run for office. People don't want to run against incumbents mainly because of funding, PACs, and associations the incumbent has, and then the one that is running has to overcome. Metro has had term limits since ninety-four. Hadn't been a problem there. I received sixty-seven emails, four and one against, concerning this issue, and encourage those citizens to be here and speak about this type of government that we would like to see here in Sumner County. Founding fathers never had the idea of a career politician in mind when setting this country in motion. Serving in these positions of leadership are supposed to be for a couple of terms and then return to your previous occupation or status that you came from. Term limits is a ninety-ten issue in the American public today, because the electorate is tired of career politicians. Founding fathers wanted people to serve as a statesman and representative of the people, not politicians clinging to the love of power or making money because of their position, like Nancy Pelosi. When people stay too long in bowels of government, they become corrupt or ineffective because they no longer go along. or ineffective because they no longer go along just to get along than stand on principled opinion. Thomas Jefferson had such a low opinion of a government service, it's not even mentioned on his gravestone. He also said, "When people, when government fears the people, there's liberty. When the people fear the government, there's tyranny." John Adams said, "One useless man is a shame, two is a law firm, and three is a Congress." I'm not going to hang around and become useless and ineffective, blowing in the wind wherever the political favor may go. Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power. Abraham Lincoln. Our Savior came to this earth to be a servant and not to be served. I've always tried to hold to this scripture, Philippians 2, 1 through 5. Since my days as a leader in the military, which incidentally got me an A-plus on my leadership paper in Command and General Staff College. Therefore, if there is any encouragement in Christ, if there is any consolation of love, if there is any fellowship of the Spirit, if any affection and compassion, make my joy complete by being of the same mind, maintaining the same love, united in spirit, intent on one purpose. Do nothing from selfish or empty conceit, but with humility of mind regard one another as more important than yourselves. Do not merely look out for your own personal interests, but also for the interests of others. Have this attitude in yourselves, which was also in Christ Jesus. Whatever form, I will be supporting this private act because I believe this country needs term limits. Congress has gone way too far. There's just, we have an ineffective government because people are stuck in power. Thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of pros and cons here, and I do think that we do need to be just aware and cautious of everything before we, we, we just run down this path. And so we've heard a lot of the pros, so you know, the fresh perspectives, you know, new leaders bring fresh ideas, new ideas, preventing stagnation, encouraging innovation and problem solving. So that's, that's a great thing. But the flip side of that is that we do lose experience and expertise. And so there, there is the potential that long-serving officials, you know, they do develop this valuable institutional knowledge that, that will be lost in those relationships that benefit their communities. So those term limits can force out effective leaders in prematurely. So we've also heard, we just heard a little bit about, you know, reducing the incumbent advantage. You know, incumbents often benefit from just name recognition, fundraising networks, established relationships. But term limits, they, they'll help level the playing field. I mean, it sounds a little bit like a DEI initiative, but you know, okay. But the flip side of that is, is it does reduce accountability to voters. You know, voters already have the power to remove ineffective leaders at the ballot box. You know, we saw that in the 2022 elections. You know, a lot of incumbents, two-year, served two terms, ran for reelection and did not get reelected. We heard that from another commissioner earlier, how effective that was. So, you know, term limits, they, they, they may take, take away the choice of folks who, who like the leadership and the representation that they currently have. You know, another good thing that we've heard about tonight is, you know, limits power consolidation. So just prevents any one individual from holding office too long, reducing the risk of entrenched political machines or undue influence. But there's a flip side of that that we haven't heard anything about. And that's, that, you know, through that, you also empower bureaucrats and, and lobbyists. So we, we talk about the political machine of the elected official, but there's also a, a political machine that's not elected officials and those folks who support behind the scenes. And so, you know, with that, we would, elected officials cycling out more frequently, unelected staff and lobbyists can gain a disproportionate influence since they'll remain in place. Also too, we've heard about it encourages the civic engagement. So opens opportunities to broader pool of citizens participating in governance. You know, that, that's great. That's already out there. You know, folks can pull papers and run. I know there are some things within the, within our party that would reduce that by a little bit, just through a bona fide status. But the opportunities are still out there. So, you know, that, that really doesn't change anything that happens today. But then there's that consistent turnover, or the constant turnover, and then the learning curve. We, we've, we've heard a little bit about that as far as a, a negative goes. And so the high turnover can interrupt the continuity of projects. We heard that voice today just in trying to pick committees about how the continuity of a project, we got to maintain because of continuity of projects. So we got to get, see these things through. Well, you know, that, it really wouldn't be the case there. We, we would say that's really not an important, important piece. Plus the consistency and, and just policy. You know, new officials need time to learn the processes and just build the relationships internally with, with all the different staff and just knowing who to go to and, and who does what. So you're talking about having to rebuild all that. So that's definitely something that we need to just be very careful of and very cautious of because there could potentially be scenarios, such as what Commissioner Becker pointed out, to where there'd just be a large majority that would, you know, term out or just not be eligible to run anymore. And then, and then what? And then, you know, this is the one that it's more or less, I think it's a, it's a national talking point that we like to try to localize, but it's, you know, focus on service and not on career as, as a positive. So, you know, the career politicians, so, you know, officials may focus more on public service rather than long-term political careers, potentially reducing corruption or self-serving behavior. I don't know if many, many people know this or even recognize, but the, the county commission is, is designed to be a part-time role. And so for those that, that aren't aware, that there's a $500 a month, it's $461.75 after taxes, compensation. That's it. So I don't necessarily know that any of us are in this for the money, you know? That this isn't a, a career that we're going to hang our hat on, you know? So to, to have that as a, you know, we need to stop career politicians. I don't know anybody who's got this as a career, you know? I don't think this is a, it's not even a valid career path to be a, a part-time politician that receiving $500 a month. So you, you're just, you're not doing it for the money. You, you really are truly doing it because you want to serve. That, that, that is the intent. And then, you know, the other part about corruption or self-serving behavior, that truly is a heart issue. And so it, it really doesn't matter what length of time you put on anything. If someone doesn't have it right in here, it, it's not going to matter. Day one, that's still a problem. It could be an hour rule, and they're still going to have a problem, a heart issue. So I don't, I don't see where that's, where this would fix that at all. But this is the one that really woke, kind of opened my eyes, where like, you know, we really need to think about this one long and hard, is that with this, we potentially change a focus from a long-term focus to short-term policy focuses. Because folks know that they can't stay long. And so, you know, newly elected officials who know, hey, I've only got two terms, they may only focus on short-term wins rather than long-term solutions. So, you know, this could actually increase the potential for the thing we say that we want to get away from, corruption and self-serving behavior. You know, since, since there really is no incentive for a, a long-term policy development because you're not going to be here to have to deal with the fallout ultimately. So, I don't know, I just put those things out there just as, as, just as a word of caution, something that I, I thought about throughout the day today. It was like, you know, let's just put it side by side. And, and, you know, what are the pros or the cons? And, you know, it's just, to me, I think that there, there seems to be more cons at this point, from at least from my perspective, and there are pros for this. And I, I'm not wholeheartedly against a term limit, but I think we have to do, we have to do it smart, you know? So we, we can't just, you know, do something to say that, oh, we got this done, you know? Because that, that would speak to the last point that I just made. It's a short-term policy example to where we're not really thinking through the long-term implications of that decision. So I would just encourage this body just to think about the longer-term implications of, of whatever decision is that's made tonight. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lambert.
Call a question.
Second. Question's been called in a second. This is on Commissioner Sullivan's amendment. All right, place that on the board, Madam Court.
Each commissioner records their vote.
All right, that, we are tired of hearing about that amendment, so we will place that on the board. Sorry, Commissioner Sullivan.
Each commissioner records their vote.
No, it's amendment.
That amendment passes with a supermajority. All right, so we are now back on, there was not another amendment, was it?
A yes vote on that.
Pardon?
I should have been a yes vote recorded on that.
All right, if you would show Commissioner Rogers as a yes vote. All right, we're back on the main motion.
I move to call the question.
Second.
All right, question's been called. Let's place that on the board.
Each commissioner records their vote.
Okay, passes with 19 votes, so we're ready to vote on the, on this issue, if you'll place that on the board. It receives 15 votes and fails. All right, go ahead.
Resolution 2508-12 is to amend rules relating to recognition of the public. I so move.
The motion and a second. Anyone, Commissioner Shoef?
I said this at the committee meeting, that I was going to do this. I made an amendment on the committee meeting. It failed. And I, I said to that committee that I was going to be making this amendment. And it is to, to move the public comments to the end of the meeting. And I want to explain my rationale here. And there were some great comments earlier about, you know, wanting folks to get, to be heard. The, I, I'm not sure that it's going to make that much difference because we like to go here till 1:00 in the morning anyway. But the reason I, I'm moving this to the end is not because I don't want to hear from folks. It is acknowledging the fact that, that we're human beings. And if we're here, and we are doing the part-time role here, and we do it in the evenings to allow for folks to have regular jobs. So if we, if we want to be able to be cognitively capable of doing things, if we were to stack 50 people at the beginning of a, of a meeting because maybe there's an organized queue to do it, you would, we won't be able to make good decisions time after time after time after time. So I, by all means, I want to, I want to hear from everybody, but I also recognize that we, if we're here to make good decisions, and if you want to, if you want to make good decisions, you, you make those better at 9:30 at night than 2:00 in the morning. So that's why I think, it's not that I don't want to hear from folks, but pragmatically, it makes sense to put it at the end. So that's my amendment.
Motion and a second. Now, we have a number of people in the queue that I'm sure want to speak on this, but I want to hear from just those who are speaking to this particular amendment. If you would raise your hand, Commissioner Boyt.
So I am for the citizens to speak also, but the only way I would vote in favor of the, adding the non-agenda items would be at the end of the meeting. And I would support everything that Commissioner Shoef says for that reason and, and more. But I am for them speaking, but only at the end. And that would be the only way I could support this measure.
Right. Commissioner Teichner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason why I'm not for that amendment, if that's the only way it gets passed, then of course I would vote for it. But just plain and simple, when we were elected, we became less important than they did. So they need to get to speak earlier than we have to stay. It's just the way it is.
Anyone else narrowly on this? Commissioner Brown?
I'd like to offer an amendment to Commissioner Shoef's. It's going to be at the end of the meeting, then no commissioner can leave the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. You've heard the amendment. Now, if you want to speak on this amendment, I would like to have you raise your hand. Please, just keep it narrow.
Would that be legal?
Probably not, but.
That would fall under ethics and conduct, and you would need to deal with that separately.
All right. And I agree with the attorney. He, he is saying that that needs to fall under ethics and conduct and not be a part of the commission. So I, the, I think the attorney's probably correct on that. Mr. Nguyen, Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've also got an amendment that I'd like to make. So, but I, I do believe the public should have the ability to speak, but I also think this body does have to function and conduct business. So I like that it would be towards the end of the bill, of the meeting for non-agenda items. I'll just remind everybody and then just put it out there too, on the record, because I'm sure I'll get something on the old interwebs saying that I don't like people. But I'll just remind everyone that, that I made the motion to allow citizens to speak on the agenda items that were removed. So I've put that out there. It's something that, that I try to put forward as often as I can. But the amendment that I'd like to make is, is I would like to form a public redress ad hoc committee under the commission chairman that consists of five members to meet on Tuesday evenings at 7:00 PM. And this meeting can go as long as, as it needs to go. And it will give the, the public ample time to, to talk to and, and redress, you know, whoever about whatever, under this commission's purview. Also too, that, that committee, they can hear the public concerns, they can-
The attorney's brought up a good question here. Is this on the amendment? We're, we're on the amendment.
I'm making amendment to his amendment.
Wait, wait a minute, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure that that is germane to the narrow-
I'm not either. I'd rather you wait until we deal with this and then, if you will, make an amendment and just narrow this to, to this, this issue right now.
However you want to handle it, I just, you know, we've, other folks make amendments that-
Let's, let's wait.
Change the direction a little bit, but if we want to chip wait, then I'll jump back in here and we'll come back.
Anyone else on this particular amendment only, please? This, Commissioner Teichner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Would there be any possibility? I believe this is appropriate, and if it's not, it's the only thing I'll say. That way you can stop me if you want me to. But I'd like to make just the amendment that if that is, wherever it is, if it's at the end or whatever, that we, that the, it is in our rules that our chairman will bring it before all of us to vote on any items that are spoken on that are non-agended items that night, directly after the public comment on non-agenda items. I need to explain to you?
I think so, because I, I certainly didn't understand what you were saying.
Okay, can you hear me? So, so if people are speaking on agended items- Okay, can you hear me? So, so if people are speaking on agended items, and then if they come and speak on non-agended items, I'll make it easy. If they come three months in a row and there's enough outcry, and it's not in committee, then I believe that the chairman could be able to bring that up and let us vote on that as a commission. Like whatever that issue is, if they're saying, hey, pave the road, or whatever that is, just something. It needs, it seems like that I don't want people just to be able to talk and not be able to have any action at all. And that, that's all I'm gonna say. I'll let you guys decide it as long as you understand that enough.
There's not a second.
There's not a second, so that dies, and the attorney says, and I agree with that also, that there would be notice problems with that, so. Seeing no one else, Commissioner Schmidt.
I will be real quick. I don't, and don't misunderstand this, I don't care, meaning I don't mind if it's in the beginning or the end. And I'll also say for the record, you know, I'm glad to see that the legislative chairman, and I even acknowledged, copied him in an email to say, look, you know, I'm glad that this is being brought forth, or something along those lines. Because when I was running our campaign, you know, our team wanted people to be able to approach their government, you know, with anything. So I'm glad to see that there has been apparently a change of heart on this issue that is brought forth here. So, all I'm saying is, I don't care, you know, don't mind if we do it in the beginning of the meeting. I think if we were to do it in the beginning, maybe to set the time before seven o'clock. So maybe suggestive, like five or six o'clock, to start non-agenda item public comment. And that would, you know, maybe streamline things. But like I said, I'm not gonna be picky on if we do it in the beginning or the end.
Seeing no one. Commissioner Brown. I'm going to, I'm going to rule that he can go ahead and speak, because you did decline there to begin with.
We're wanting to allow citizens to talk about items of interest that the citizen may not see on the agenda. In other words, instructing your representatives, as the Tennessee Constitution guarantees. There might be an issue that the commission may not be aware of. Therefore, it is brought to our attention at that time, and, and if it's done at the end of the meeting, I don't see how that's done. It needs to be at the beginning of the meeting, so that it can be acted upon if it is urgent.
Call for the question, Commissioner. All right, we'll place that on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
It receives nineteen votes, so we will place the amendment on the board to.
What's the amendment? Can you restate what we're? Is just, are we on Commissioner Shoef's?
Each Commissioner record your vote.
That amendment passes with thirteen votes. All right, we're back on the main motion. All right, anyone? Commissioner Becker.
All right, so now it's at the end. I would like to make an amendment that it is, there's sort of a two-part here. That we limit it to ten speakers, so it's three minutes of ten speakers, that's roughly, you know, thirty minutes roughly. But ten speakers, and then, or eleven PM, whichever comes first. So, ten speakers or eleven PM, whichever comes first, is when it would end.
So we can understand this, if, if the meeting was already at ten forty-five, we'd have fifteen minutes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, my amendment right now is to allow up to ten speakers or eleven PM, whichever comes first.
You received a second to that. Anyone want to speak to that? Commissioner Harrison?
If we voted for this and we were already past eleven PM, then they would have to wait till the next month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Raise your hand, Commissioner Jones.
I would like to amend that amendment. To be just the first part only, and remove the eleven PM deadline. Just the ten speakers at three minutes apiece, and leave it at that. So that's my amendment.
So this amendment is to remove the eleven o'clock, basically. All right. Any other comments on that? All right, let's put that on the board for a vote, then we'll move from there.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
That vote fails, received only twelve votes, so we're back on the first amendment. All right, Commissioner.
I'm gonna speak to that one.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm ready to make the amendment that I wanted to make earlier. Do I need to continue to wait, or am I good to go?
No, go, go ahead, but if you can be brief, it would help. Oh, that's right. I apologize.
I'll, I'll just jump back in, Mr. Chairman, but whenever the, the next opportunity to make an amendment, I'd like to be up.
Commissioner Janong wants to change her vote.
Pardon?
And that changes the outcome.
So, that would be, you're changing from the red. To, to yes. All right, so with that passing, just a moment, please, we, we can't. With that passing, the attorney calls for my attention that we're down to just ten speakers at three minutes. All right, at, at the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, yep, yep. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make my amendment now, if that would be okay, since that's been disposed of. Okay. So, I'd like to make an amendment to form a public redress ad hoc committee that serves underneath the commission chairman. That consists of five members to meet on Tuesday evenings at seven PM. That would mirror the, the same time that this, this body meets, just on a different day. That committee can meet for as long as they would like, so there would be no time limit for anything. And the committee can hear the public concerns and report back to the commission chair, who can then delegate to the appropriate committee whatever concerns have been raised for action. So that's, that's my amendment.
All right, is there a second?
There isn't a second yet.
What's your point?
You were correct, Mr. Chairman.
I am, I, I tend to agree that it, it is not. I don't, I, I, it's questionable as to whether it's germane to, to this. Yeah, that would, might be good, especially since I'm not gonna be chairman. Mr. Becker could be tied up all Tuesday evening with that. That, I think it's a good idea.
That's right, so I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great compromise for everybody. You know, would enable folks to be able to redress their government, and there wouldn't be a time limit. It would set a, set apart a time and place for that. That would make available, you know, the government officials to, for folks to talk with. No, that's okay. I was making an amendment, and it's, it's just odd the way that others can make amendments out there, and it carries.
We'll, we'll look at that and, okay.
I'm just gonna say, it's, it's, this is circumventing the spirit of public speaking before the legislative body addresses citizen comments. What you're trying to do is get away from citizens being able to come to speak non-agenda items to the full commission body, and that's the goal of this. That's what citizens want. That's what other cities do, other municipalities and governments, whether it's county governments, school boards, or city governments. And so I'm gonna be opposed to that. I think it's ridiculous to do that.
Okay, well, that's for another day anyway, so let's not, let's not get into that. So we're back to Commissioner Shoef.
Becker's amended by Commissioner Jones.
Okay. All right, that, are we ready to vote on that? Okay, let's put that on the board. All right, that fails with twelve votes. Pardon? Green button? All right. Are you wanting to vote for? You were not recorded. Okay, all right, well then that does pass with thirteen votes. We're back to the main motion.
So to restate what is, just, I just restate, I guess, the motion now, is the motion to approve, as amended, public comments at the end of the meeting, three minutes apiece, with a limit of ten people. Is that what we're voting on? Three minutes apiece, up to ten people.
All right.
That's what, as amendment. Well, yeah, we're voting on Commissioner Shoef at this point.
All right, so I think we're ready to put this on the board.
It's the amendment to the main motion.
The main motion, the main motion.
Oh, yeah, we did.
All right, go ahead. Main motion. You're voting on the main motion here. Commissioner Shoef's passed.
Mine passed, it, mine passed, Mr. Chairman. It already passed, it's already at the end. Then we were backed up to the main, and then Mr. Becker amended it as an additional parallel amendment. So we, we're on the main now.
That's what I've been saying.
I apologize, I thought.
Okay. All right, put it on the board. It receives nineteen votes. That passes. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Mans.
Item twenty-five oh eight dash thirteen is to amend rules relating to motions to defer. This is just to clarify something that Commissioner Becker and I argued it last time, but this is just to clarify the motion, so I so moved it, I move.
All right, it's a motion and a second. Any discussion, Commissioner Lambert? Commissioner Boyd, call for a question? All right, well, there's no rule on that, actually, but.
Did he call the question? Second.
Put that on the board. Question.
Question's been called.
It's a question's been called. Commissioner Boyd. Go ahead. All right, we're ready, according to a superma, more than a supermajority, we're ready to vote on this.
Can the lawyer tell me how this differs from Roberts' rules?
Pardon?
Are we deferring from Roberts' rules in this amendment, or are we just restating Roberts' rules? In this redefining.
Roberts' rules is really thick. What part, what are you referring?
I'm just saying, we're, we're, we're voting on how we define a motion to defer, and I'm just asking, are we restating Roberts' rules, or are we changing and diverting from Roberts' rules?
It's, it is a change in the rules and procedures for the county. That's what it is.
So it is deferring from Roberts' rules in this manner?
Basically.
Can I clarify this? Hold on.
I think, I think Commissioner Boyd, that what this is, is, well, I'll just let the maker, I'll let Commissioner Mansfield further explain.
This is pretty simple. This is the motion to defer and refer. Defer is thirteen votes, and there was debate with the law director. And both Commissioner Becker and I challenged the law director on this, and said, fine, I'll bring forth the resolution, and we'll just make a rule change. The motion to defer has always historically been in this body to have a lower threshold of thirteen votes, that you can still send it to a committee with instructions at a later date. And refer has always been a higher threshold of sixteen votes with no debate, just to be able to refer it back to a committee at place and time. All this does is clarify that the motion to defer is to actually defer it to a future date, and also that you can send it back to a committee, if should you so choose, as part of that, that motion, and it's a thirteen vote threshold. And that's all that was added, was that second part, of clarifying that you can send it to a committee.
I think it'll help everybody understand. If you can tell us, that's in opposition to what?
It's not in opposition to anything. It's just clarifying the commission rules as they've been since before I got on the commission. So, it has nothing to do with Roberts' rules. The standing rules of the commission they adopt can supersede Roberts' rules, and where this commission is, rules are silent, Roberts' rule kicks in. Everybody knows that. So, this is simply further clarifying the motion to defer. It not only means it's deferring to a future time, but you can also designate, it can go to somewhere, a committee, or back to the full commission, as part of that motion. That's the clarification.
Commissioner Becker. Just agreeing with Commissioner Mansfield on that. This, we've been acting, we've been acting with refer and defer in the same manner for the almost twelve years I've been here. Not until a couple of months ago, did our law director highlight something that the wording was missing, or whatever. So this is only cleaning, this is not changing anything we've been doing, so just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Question's been called, yeah.
All right, we're ready to vote on this. The question's been called. Let's, let's vote on this. All right, that receives nineteen positive votes.
Resolution twenty-five oh eight dash fourteen, authorizing, amending Tennessee opioid abatement agreement and approved settlement agreements. I so move.
Motion and a second. We'll put that on the board. I've seen no one in the queue. Unanimous vote on that. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Item twenty-five oh eight dash fifteen is a request for a public act, just a request of the state, of the general assembly to exclude county employees from county, elected county office. This is something that commission, that passed, well, didn't pass, it was state legislature, is brought forth for bills several times in the state legislature. Something citizens talk about a lot, but it seems that the state legislature has killed it. But no, I don't know of any county commission or legislative body that has actually sent a resolution to the state saying, we support this. And so a lot of people feel it's just a conflict of interest. And so, it was brought forward in legislative committee, and I so move.
So so this is to?
It's just a request.
Show support.
Show support and request, it's not a private act, it's just a request to show support.
Motion and a second, Commissioner Wright.
When I got elected in my first term, I had no idea. I've never been in government work. I've never been a politician. I don't consider myself a politician now. I'm up here working for the people. I do that irregardless of whether I'm here or not. I work for the public. I'm a public servant. I don't think we should take and punish someone because of their job from not running for office. I had a lot of my older neighbors come to me and ask me to run my first term. I think I'm the only one in here who is currently employed by the county. So maybe this is directed at me. If it is, then maybe we need to have another discussion. I do this because the people elected me to. I don't do it for fun. I don't come in here and argue with you folks. I say what I need to say and then I'm done and I vote. That's what the people expect of me. I may not run another term, but I may decide to throw my name in the hat. I haven't made my mind up yet. But don't punish others because of what they do at their full-time job. And I would like to make an amendment to this to include spouses, father, mother, son, daughter, son-in-law, and daughter-in-law. If we're gonna do it, then let's do it right.
Our motion and a second to that amendment and regardless of whether you're in the queue or not, please just raise your hand if you want to be recognized to that particular amendment. That's simple to understand, okay? Commissioner Teachman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I brought it forth because my spouse used to work for the schools in Sumner County. She no longer works for the schools in Sumner County. Second of all, it's not directed at anybody, it's just protecting us. I mean, it's just, you just, you don't want your bill collector to hold your credit card. It just it just doesn't make sense. And so all it comes down to is just to save and protect future generations for long term from from ourselves, from nepotism, from all those things. A lot of things would go in. Spouses are included in this in this bill, I believe it was in the last iteration I saw. Is it not?
Not in this resolution, no.
Okay, well, I I actually, I would like to make an amendment to the amendment just to include spouses. That was my that was my intention.
His amendment included.
Included.
No, no, I no, I agree, but the reason why I don't want to include everybody, I love that idea and I guess it's fine, but I think that it that is where we get to a point where that you're getting to somebody. I mean, you got a step cousin-in-law, grandma, grandpa, dog kennel, something, you know, something's going on and I don't know that that would be enforceable. I love I love the fact if it's gonna directly impact your household income, you shouldn't be able to vote on it. And if we would just if we just had it in charge and 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 sir, I mean, if you were enforcing that we couldn't vote on it ethically, I'd be all for that. But I think that we're not gonna always be in office and we're not gonna always have an understanding or debate and it it'll go on to where that, you know, future generations, everybody might be a government employee. And it just it just makes total sense to me, you know, that there's no way that the folks would want all of us to be voting on our own salaries. It just doesn't make any sense at all and it doesn't seem fiscally responsible or conservative in in the in the small c conservative. And so just I just really do, I mean, I would support all of them, but I think that that gets to a point where that, you know, it just seems like there's almost too many. But I mean, as long, I mean, my dad doesn't send me money for my my income, you know what I mean? My cousins don't send me money for my income, you know, you know what I mean? But my wife does and so, you know, I spend all her money. But anyway, so that's just that's my one, that's my one caveat, but I would like to make an amendment to that just to include spouses only, because that was my intent when I brought that forth. Spouses only.
Spouses only. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, anybody to that particular amendment before we can go on? Let's put it on the board then and see what we have there. We had a an amendment here with Commissioner Wright that it include a number of relatives, a number of relatives and his limits it to spouse only.
The two spouses.
Well, I don't think it has, yeah, basically, it's. So let's put that on the board and vote.
Each commissioner records your vote.
That fails, does not receive a majority of votes, so we're back on the Mr. Wright's, Commissioner Wright's amendment and I see Commissioner Ring. On the main motion. Anyone raise your hand if it's just on this amendment? Maybe we can clear it up. Okay, Commissioner Lambert? Question's been called and a second. Place that on the board, please.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Receiving a super majority, we'll place the other on the board for a vote. Oh, was that the amendment or the main motion?
That was the amendment.
Amendment, okay, we'll place the amendment on the board.
No, we just voted on the amendment, or is that a call question? Sorry.
No, this is amendment.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Okay, we're still on the amendment. Who wants to?
I'm gonna get in the queue on that one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, all right. Commissioner Ring.
Thank you, sir. I'm voting no on this. When I ran the first time, I was a county, I was an employee of the School Board of Education. I was a teacher. The people, I put that on my, anything I put out, I put out there, I was a teacher, Sumner County educator. People voted for me. The second time I ran and last time I ran, I was a Sumner County educator and people voted for me. They knew I was a teacher. They felt that didn't matter because I would, they felt like I would do the job that they wanted me to do. And I believe that this reduces people's opportunity to run for office. It also reduces people's opportunity to vote for the person that they want. So I will oppose this. I think it's, I just don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Right, County Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you haven't spoken all night, so.
Out of curiosity, it seems as though most of this discussion has been geared towards county commission. Does this extend to all county offices? The reason why I ask is that, you know, many of these county offices, we have a leadership plan in place, i.e. Carolyn Templeton was a county employee when she was elected. Our Sheriff Craddock was an employee when he was elected. Cindy Williams was an employee when she was elected. And so just curious, will this extend to the constitutional officers as well?
I can answer that.
Commissioner Lambert? What's your point? That's a, that's what you think. It's his privilege to do that. No, no, I am not, no. It's his privilege to do that. I mean, you don't know, that's your. Oh, you watched him, okay. Call Roberts' rules, you do not have, there's, you called the question, that's it. So we'll put it on the board.
Mr. Chairman, no, our mayor asked a question. Can we at least answer our mayor?
Go ahead. Put it on the board. I don't need your instructions, Commissioner. I'm a big boy. All right, go ahead and put it on the board.
I'd like to get in the queue, Mr. Chairman, to answer the question.
All right, that does not receive the adequate number of votes, so we're back. We're back with, all right, go ahead, Commissioner Mansfield, if you can explain that better.
Yeah, the answer to the question is is no, is does not preclude someone running for sheriff or this is strictly, I mean, basically, because I asked the same question to the law director because the way the wording came out, way the wording is written, I'm gonna ask the law director to explain this. I was a little confused on it as well with the language. What came out of legislative, the resolution that was made was that a county commissioner, a county employee cannot run for office in the county legislative body because if you see on your desk, this is a bill that actually was in the State General Assembly six years ago and the language basically says a county employee is disqualified from serving as a member of the county legislative body for the county that employs such county employee by reason of being a county employee. I did ask the the wording that came that the law director's office brought forward was not, was a little different than what was passed out of legislative, but the way he explained it to me is is that hi- his words, and he can speak for himself, was that it elect a constitutional officer is not a county employee is and that's what the law director said to me and to that degree, I I'm just saying. But the spirit of this, and I'm happy to amend this, and I'll go ahead and make an amendment that to this resolution that basically says somewhere a county employee is disqualified from serving as a member of the county legislative body for the county that employs such county employee by reason of being a county employee. So that's my mo- that's my amendment. The reason is, at no other level in government do you have a employee serving on the legislative body, voting for their budgets, voting to increase taxes to increase their pay, except for county commissions in state of Tennessee. Federal level, you cannot do that. The state level, you cannot do that. And the city level, you cannot do that. It is only county commission level that a county employee can be on the legislative body in order to vote. And I've sat here on a pre- on a commission where a county employee voted to raise taxes so that they could financially benefit to get a pay raise for themselves and their spouse upwards of sixteen thousand dollars for that household. That, to me, is unethical, it's immoral and shouldn't happen. A lot of people feel this way and citizens feel, anytime I ask a citizen, do you think it's okay for a county employee to raise taxes to give themselves a raise or their spouse a raise, I've never heard anybody say that's a great idea, ever. So I'm I'm gonna vote for the the resolution Commissioner Teachman brought forward, but I would like to vote for it with this amendment specifying, to the county mayor's point, I didn't like the way this was worded coming out of the county law director's office. I think the wording was confusing. It needs to be clarified. So my result, my amendment to that, I'll restate it, is that a county employee is disqualified from serving as a member of the county legislative body of the county that employs such county employee by reason of being a county employee. That was my amendment to the main motion.
All right, did you make the original amendment?
I did.
If the second will agree, we could just.
I second that.
Okay, well, then we'll just assume if this was your original motion. Everybody understand? Okay. All right, Commissioner Shoef?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of things. First, I believe that we changed this in legis- in legislative committee and the way this is written here is that it is statewide and I, this is, this is one of these that I'm actually a bit on the fence of for and for for various reasons and I I lean toward it, but I have some reservations about it. One of my reservations was that in certain counties, I I do actually think that we are, Sumner County is is large, we're, you know, eighth or ninth largest in the state. I know there's counter arguments, good counter arguments to this, but it's very different than like Lauderdale County where, you know, you start excluding county employees in certain districts, you you may actually have a problem finding folks who want to do this at one o'clock in the morning. So I amended it and I believe this passed in legislative to change this to be a private act just for this county. So I I think it's wrong in the here, so that's that's item one. Item two, Mr. Wright's amendment really got me thinking here and I appreciate him for bringing it up because there's a good point, like, it's good to say, hey, I'm, I don't want, it is a very, it is logical and rational to say a person shouldn't be able to vote on their paycheck. I I get that, I really do. But Mr. Wright's point is well taken, like, well, how far does that go? Is it your cousin or your brother or, I mean, you know, you all live in, some people all live in a household together and I I think there's a, I agree, Mr. Mansfield's comment about this being unique to to counties and that that other legislative bodies do not do have that check in place such that if you're a employee where your financial benefit directly derives from the budget that that legislative body sets, there's a, there's a disqualification there. So in principle, I agree with that, but I, between the fact that this, I think that that this was changed from what actually passed out of legislative, one, and two, I'd really like to s- to see what, how the state deals with it. I would like another pass at this, so, I mean, I actually would like to to defer this back to legislative. I do want to see it come back, but I'd like to defer it just because I I think it needs another one more pass. That's my motion.
All right, motion to defer in a second. Anyone want to speak to defer, Commissioner?
I'm just gonna make, there was a lot of statements, statements made earlier about the committee process and you can bring things forward, but, you know, it's how it works is if you can't get something on an agenda, you're not gonna be able to get to talk about it. And if you can't, and if you get things, you can't get it on the commission agenda, you can't talk about it. And so I'm not gonna be in favor of deferring this. I'd be fine, I I want to see this voted up or down tonight, but it would not preclude anyone from coming back and having an alternate resolution in September to either rescind this one and and replace it, which we've done as well. But I'm I'm not in favor of that because of the nature of what this body has shown a habit of. But I'm, I'm not in favor of that because of the nature of what this body has shown a habit of is, is killing things so it can't even have a debate or get on agendas or canceling meetings so you can be more sneaky about it. So I'm, I'm gonna be opposed to that.
Can I respond, just a quick response to that?
Very quick.
It'll be super quick. So I, I will personally bring it to legislative. Because I do want to see it thought through. I think I'll still lean toward it, but with a lot of checks. And if it doesn't make it, I will personally try to add it from the floor. So I'll just let you know.
All right, Commissioner Teasner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just, just one quick point. I, I, I heard the spirit of all three commissioners. And it seems like that everybody is in agreement that household income shouldn't come from, from, you know, being able to vote on your own household income. That's what, it seems to be the consensus. And so, in the spirit of that, because sometimes it's not spouse, sometimes it's, you know, girlfriend or boyfriend or, you know, or dad or son or daughter, you know, whatever. But I think in that case, that if we could just, I would like to make an amendment to that original, you know, possibility. And I don't know if I'm able to do that, so I'm just gonna say it. And if I can't, I'll, I'll sit down. But I'd like to make an amendment that it just includes that you can't be a county employee if you draw, you can't, sorry. Let me just rephrase it. That you are excluded from being on the county legislative body if you garner your income for your household, any part of it, from the county's budget that you're voting upon. You wouldn't end on a preposition, but, you know, you get the point.
Just a point of clarification that was given to me and, and this would affect someone like me. What about retired people?
That's why we're gonna defer it. I, I think, would it, okay, would it change your retirement amount in your voting? Like, like, could you vote on raising or lowering the amount of pension that you get?
Well, my question is, what about retired people?
No, I'm just saying, would you be able to, would you be able to raise or lower your retired pension? You can't, okay, then it's, TCRS, Consolidated Retirement System is set by law, so it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't exclude you. No. I mean, that, you know, you wouldn't be getting your income that you could vote upon.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do think we need to think this one through a little bit more and just to make sure we're covering all our bases on this one. So I, I think that to totally strike out county employees from eligibility to serve, period, is, is a little short-sighted. There's, there's just a lot of hard-working men and women that are employed by the county. And they've got some of the best insights as to what's truly going on in the county. What's needed, ways to fix it, different ways to address things. I mean, these are literally the folks that are just the, the pulse of everything and are closest to the work. And why we would want to just exclude them is, I think, just a little short-sighted at this point without further clarification. So I would like to see this to be deferred, just to go back to committee, just to have more discussion. Also, too, a previous speaker spoke about, you know, things being shuffled around in committee and not brought back up. I think it's a shame the, the committee leadership in the past three years has done such a thing. That, that, you know, will, will take stuff off the floor and not bring it back. I think it's a shame and I hope that our new committee leadership doesn't do the same thing. So, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask two questions. If, if you would be so kind as to direct to the law director. Number one, does this resolution make a distinction between full and part-time employees? And number two, if it's part-time employees, do we all have to resign tonight? Because we are part-time employees onboarded by the county.
We don't vote on our budget.
Actually, we do.
Commissioner Jones?
You vote on your budget every day.
Commissioner Becker?
First time I've ever called a question.
You'll be wanting to do that a lot. All right, questions been called. We'll, this is the, is this main motion? Amendment, yeah. All right. Call the question.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, we'll talk about this for a little while longer. Commissioner Brown?
I don't, I don't understand where we have a county of over two hundred thousand people and we've got to rely on a small group of county employees. That doesn't make sense. There's a whole lot of people in this county that can run for office that's not a county employee. And that, that argument right there just does not hold water, as far as I'm concerned.
Commissioner Rogers?
Well, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I can't help it. It's amazing that we stand and we talk about constitutional rights and privileges and all that stuff that we have. But it's a crying shame that one can't work for a government and still exercise their right to serve the same form of government. There's granite, there's already, there's laws out there when a person is supposed to declare a conflict of interest. Thankfully, that was put through about four years ago, I believe, through the General Assembly. But it's amazing that when we talk about constitutional and constitution and we need this constitution and I don't think a person's employment or place of employment should dictate their constitutional rights to be a service and serve the people they also work for. So it's a lot of work here still to be done.
All right, we have Commissioner Jones in the queue and then we will be ready to vote on the, I guess it's the deferral. Okay, Commissioner John?
I would like to speak to a concern that Commissioner Shof brought up and, and ask him about a possible change in his, his motion to defer. One of the concerns was that this would go for the whole state and it may affect other counties. Would an amendment be in order to make it Sumner only and that way you can see your test of how the state handles it and that would give us another shot to come back with this. If, if we, we are the test, just Sumner County only, would, would you be willing to amend your amendment for that? So we could have an up-down vote on this tonight. That, I mean, that would be an amendment that I would do. But I'm not sure if amending your amendment into this or if it's just a separate amendment.
Mr. Chairman, he's asking for a private act.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Yeah, you're good.
As quick as I can. I, that, my, I would potentially be okay with that, but my problem is that we did that in committee. And so, and I, I know that we did that in committee and I could go back and look at the notes, but I recall, I recall discussing this and I believe Mr. Mansfield actually seconded it and we, we voted on it that way. And so, right, but if, if what passed out of committee didn't make it here, then we need to kick it back to the committee and get it right. And like, it, on top of that, and the reason, you know, that was what was on my mind then, but, but Mr. Wright's comments made me, made my wheels turn a little bit more and I, I think, look, this will come back. I, I don't think this is gonna go into a, if, if it doesn't come back, I'll, I'll make it a problem, I promise. And I'll, I'll try to bring it up and we'll, we'll do this. But it, Mr., between Mr. Wright's comments and the fact that we didn't, that what is on here isn't what came out of committee, that, that should be enough to, to send it back. That's why I'm just gonna leave it at deferring.
All right, place that on the board, Madam Chairman. Madam Clark?
Each commissioner records their vote.
Is that a majority? Okay, it received thirteen votes to defer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to group and approve items G and H, one through seven and one.
Second.
Budget Committee? G, Budget Committee, one through seven, and B, H, Financial Management, one. I'm, make a motion to group and approve.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.